I'd like to call the special meeting to order. This is a special meeting of Market City Commission of August 12th, 2014. Would everyone please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Your Honor. Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
Commissioner Coine?
Here.
Mayor Burt M. Stonehouse?
Here.
Commissioner Campana?
Here.
Commissioner Kambenzi?
Here.
And Mayor Nene?
Here.
Thank you. Is there any agenda changes to be made? Does everyone have the right agendas? You folks don't have the correct agenda yet?
No. Nevertheless, I move the agenda to be approved.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. It's moved by Commissioner Ryan, second by Commissioner Coine, to approve the agenda, as some of us have. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. The motion passes unanimously. I have no announcements. Public comment? Is there any public comment? Desired to make public comment? Seeing none. We'll move the consent agenda is to approve the minutes of the August 11th, 2014 commission meeting. Commissioners, what is your pleasure with this item? Commissioner Ryan?
I move the consent agenda be approved.
Okay. Is there support? Commissioner Coine? It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, supported by, second by Commissioner Coine, to approve the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the August 11th, 2014 commission meeting. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no. The motion is passed unanimously. So now we're on to new business, and I can turn it over to the city manager and the CFO.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, members of the commission. And I'd also like to, in particular, thank all of my department heads and staff for helping make this, hopefully, a very successful kickoff to our budget process this year. I'd like to note that what we're going to be doing tonight to lead off is different from in past budget years, and also that this is the first budget that will be passing in a full accordance with the new city charter that was voted in, in 2012. Part of that change requires that we establish some type of baseline budget and that we accommodate any kind of volatility, and you're going to be hearing more about that this evening through supplemental appropriations. We're going to lay out for you what we perceive the challenges to be, based on the earlier CFO forecasts, based on what our recommendations were for the capital investment strategy, and based on what we think we know about revenues as of this evening. And so it's important to keep all that in mind, because this will be a little bit different process than it's been in the past, and hopefully, we'll spend a fair amount of time describing those differences early on, so that we can get right into the meat of the recommendations as we go through the rest of the sessions. So Gary and I are going to kind of mutter and jeff this. And for your edification, we've had two all-staff meetings today, where we've had a chance to roll out to all of city staff this presentation, give them a chance to do questions and answers with it. We're taking steps to have it posted to the city website, so that link's available even during this meeting. We didn't want to post it before the city commission had seen it, because we didn't want you to potentially have the public coming back and asking you questions for something that we hadn't had the courtesy to share with you first. But the folks at home, if they're watching this and they want to read along, it should be available shortly. So, starting out, first page, balanced budget requirements. Something that's mandatory under state law, under constitutional law here, also something that's mandatory under our city charter. Excuse me for a second. We've got the clerk and the CFO making sure that we're getting the display up. There we go. And our remote technology works, too. The CFO can run it from the desk here with me. You've heard me say it before, I know, when you brought me on board, and over the years, I've tried to reiterate this message. The biggest single investment we have as a community is in our city staff. If you take staff out of the building, it's just an empty building with a lot of desks, with tools, with cars that don't drive themselves. The number-one most valuable asset we have by far is the good work and service that our employees provide every day to our residents. Their experience, their skills, their knowledge of the community, as you've seen many times, is what brings the scores of solicitations that we get from their good work. The occasional less-than-satisfied customers I'm grateful are an extraordinary minimum in our experience. But without them, none of the rest of this budget is meaningful, because we'd have nobody to execute it, or run the city efficiently. Also, as was established by the city commission's strategy, public health and safety is a number-one priority. If we don't have buildings that are being put out, if they occasionally catch on fire, or low crime, nobody will want to use our parks, nobody will want to live here. And, of course, no new taxes. And we are all very painfully aware of the cost of living increases, of the impacts of a lot of different things we're going to speak to tonight. And there are substantial numbers of people in our community that are living on fixed income, that are living or trying to make a living on minimum wage. We're trying to deal with that. We're trying to create economic opportunity and growth, but we need to always be mindful that government isn't about constantly raising taxes and asking for more money. Government is about trying to do the best we can possibly do, as efficiently as we can possibly do it. So this balanced budget requirement also has to, per the charter, accommodate our master plans, our strategies, all of the supplemental plans that go along with that. Per our policies, we don't gamble with public debt, we don't gamble with public finances. So if there's any doubt about the availability of revenue, it's not something that we book into our baseline budget. We are, per charter, now working on a baseline plus supplementals, and so that is because of the direct will of the people wanting to see the city commission more involved in the ongoing management of the budget. It's not like the old days, where you passed it once in May, and you came back and worried about it again the next May. It's something that they want you to have a more active role in helping set the direction of the city. And then the last one, and it's equally as important, if it's worth doing, it's worth doing right. We didn't want to try to balance the budget in a way where we were diminishing the expectations of the community, or giving them less value than what they believe their tax dollars are giving them now. So all those things rolling together really set kind of the broadest possible context for how we approached the budget this year. Next slide. Here's really the, one of the key questions. If you look in the past, we really went on kind of an incremental basis. When we had less periods of volatility, since I've been here, in my last four years or so, tax law has changed every year, revenue-sharing law has changed every year. We're seeing an unprecedented amount of challenges, we're going to get into a little bit later, that create more ambiguity than we've ever had, in terms of predicting how much revenue we are going to be able to use as a city government in the coming fiscal year. And recall our principal sources of revenue, our property taxes, and shared revenues from the state, whether guaranteed by the Constitution, or whether subject to statutory changes. Even within this election in the last week, we saw personal property taxes go away, we've got a whole new regime that's going to go in place, that isn't really quite fully understood by anybody yet. So we don't really know what that process is going to result in. We have some other major issues we're going to talk about that have an impact on the incoming revenues. And so sitting down this year is not like past years, where we could kind of connect the dots, or we had some ability to forecast or predict with a little bit more accuracy where we thought we were going to end up at the end of a fiscal year, and we were going to start the next. That's very ambiguous right now. What we're getting to on the revenue side is our tax tribunal cases. We're going to get into a little bit more of the impact of that later, but our largest and our second-largest taxpayers have basically come in and said they don't want to pay what they've been paying. The impact of that can be in the millions of dollars, should they succeed. We have also our major economic clusters, at least two of the three in flux. We don't know what the long-term future of the Prescott Power Plant might be. We still have no word as to whether or not Duke LifePoint intends to stay in the city, or maybe move out and relocate somewhere else. PPT, I mentioned a moment ago, has been replaced with a new regime. We don't know what that means for the city yet. There's been a lot of coverage, and I know you're aware of what's been going on with the freeze emergency. We've got no word yet back from the state exactly how much of the liability we incurred will be paid back. Of course, there's new state property tax credits coming through for different classes of residents all the time. And for some of our more major programs, like road funding, where we expect millions of dollars a year, we're in, somewhere in the range, I think, of about $300,000 a year. So we're getting about 7% of what we typically get, guaranteed as of this deliberation. And so the impact's pretty clear. There's a tremendous amount of volatility in our traditional sources of revenue that potentially is going to leave us with a lot less than what we're typically used to working with. If you look at the other side, the costs, we're seeing changes there, too. Police-fire pension is a good example. All of the city's pension funds have some level of unfunded liability associated with them. Gary's going to speak a little bit more about the changes going on with the financial standards and the actuarial standards, but this is one where, again, when they calculate it out, they send you the bill. And it's not one where we say, we think we owe 300% more this year. We get word from our pension fund managers, and they tell us what we owe, and that's what we pay. Thankfully, we've never missed a payment. We're making 100% of our payments on time, but what you're seeing here is changes in the valuation and changes in the rules. Minimum wage increased. We use a lot of seasonal labor, a lot of part-time labor. That's on the order of a $40,000 to $50,000 increase. That's new this year. Energy cost increases, very familiar that the commission is sensitive to this. Electrical rate increases, fuel oil increases, propane increases. All the other kind of consumables we use are rising faster than the inflation in the cost of living. Freeze emergency charges, you'll hear a little bit more about that. Healthcare costs, of course, increase, you're hearing a lot about that. That's a nationwide issue, not just exclusive to the city. And then we're seeing the usual type of commodity prices, in road salts, in chlorine, in fluoride, and other commodities that we use to run city services. So what you're seeing isn't a particularly happy trend. You're seeing a point where, at exactly the point in time when revenues are diminishing, costs are substantially increasing. And so the challenge this year, unlike other years, is how do we make those two curves work, and what steps have we taken to try to deliver a balanced budget? So with that, let me turn it over to Gary to kind of lead us through a little bit of the strategy we put in place this year.
Okay. You already got a little bit of taste of the strategy we were hoping to accomplish when we went through the capital outlay process. If you remember, we had three different tranches to capital outlay, and we were going with what we're considering the base, and then, depending on how the volatile revenue situation shook out, then there were possible other additions. We really approached the operating budget in the same capacity. Sort of the theme to this year's budget was to buy time. Over time, we'll get a better handle on the volatile revenue situation, whether good or bad. And if it's bad, we've presented a budget where the pain isn't nearly as hard, and if it's good, then we'll be able to add some things in, because the strategy, as we mentioned in capital outlay, as well as in the operating budget, it's easier to add to a budget than it is to cut. And so that was really the theme that we kept throughout the entire budget process. So as we go through the budget, over the next, tonight, and the next three sessions, that's kind of the theme to keep in mind, that we're presenting really kind of a worst-case scenario budget, but then as volatile revenue sources shake out one way or the other, then we'll be able to adjust from there.
So this is really, when we were sharing this example with the staff, it's important to note, particularly for the people at home, to make sure they understand the terminology as we're using it. Zero-based budget is essentially what people do in their own, in their own living, in managing their own personal finances. In city government, in many past years, we used a process called incremental budgeting, which in effect meant that department heads would look at how much resources they need the previous year, and they'd say, well, we want to do about the same thing, or we want to do something maybe a little bit differently this year. So whatever we did last year automatically was the valid baseline, and then we're just going to add a certain percentage in for cost-of-living changes, or other changes that we might know could have come about because of commission direction, or price increases, or whatever it might have been. And we can't afford to do that, for all the reasons you've heard a little bit about already. We've just got too much volatility. We're trying to manage to put the city in a position where we just say, okay, we've got $19 million worth of costs, based on an incremental view, but we're only counting on $15 million worth of solid revenue to be available to pay for it. And so instead of incremental budgeting, we're doing something called zero-base, which is, take a look at all of your costs for the year, estimate what those might be, and then, the same as you might choose if you're a homeowner, do I continue buying cable TV, or can I afford not to do that? Do I need to plan on putting money aside for Christmas presents, or for a vacation? Do I need to look at all of my expenses? How much will I spend on food all year? How much will I spend on insurance all year? And make the trades over time, as those bills start to hit? That's essentially, in public finance, what zero-based budgeting is. You go back, you take a look at each and every line item, to make sure that the community master plan still says we need it, the city commission's strategic plan still says we need it, or we need to do something differently, that we haven't found other improvements or efficient ways of doing it, because our folks out on the front line are always looking for that kind of efficiency, or we haven't improved it through some replacement of technology, or any of those things, or all of those things. So it requires a little bit different view of what is automatically validated as part of the baseline. It means that what you did last year isn't necessarily going to be the valid starting point for this year. And so you can imagine, you're going through thousands and thousands of line items, making sure that, based on the interaction with the department heads, you're going to hear about in a second, that you fully understand what's being recommended, and what the trade-offs are, if you have to apply baseline and supplemental philosophy to making the resources available. Now, part of that, and this is part of what the, why we're taking the extra time to kind of explain all this to the commission and the community, is there are trades with all of that, that reflect the judgment of the department heads, the judgment of the CFO and myself. So part of the advantages and disadvantages are laying out here. The important takeaway is, the single largest disadvantage is the single most important. It's a very time-consuming process, and the amount of data that gets wrapped into that discussion reflects all of the priorities we've heard from the city commission and the community over the course of the last year. And so to the best extent that we can meet the statutory framework and the policy guidance that we've gotten from the commission, all of that type of judgment is what we believe we've wrapped now into the recommendations you're going to be seeing tonight. So it's pretty much the same way, from a broadest possible standpoint, that the process has always worked. We go out, we take a look at all this information, we put it together to figure out, do we need the money at the beginning of the year, or at the end of the year, and are there opportunities to see which tranche would be the logical place where we would ask for the resources? Evaluate if there are other options. Doesn't have to all be about cuts. Part of the value of the introspection that department heads reported was, in many cases, they would go back, take a look at how many man-hours they were dedicating to a certain type of activity, and then look at the costs they were recovering for it. And so there are examples where a permitting process that we might have been charging $50 for, cost us $700 in manpower and labor. And it's pretty clear, if we were running a private business like that, we wouldn't be open very long, because you can't infinitely sustain that type of imbalance. And then, of course, at the end of the day, we want to make sure that whatever the solutions are, that you understand, as we've been espousing all year, for as much as this challenge is new in the way that we're going to be managing the budget, it's certainly not something that's going to have an impact on the financial health of the city. And so to overreact, to try to apply a short-term solution to a long-term problem, or vice-versa, to make a decision on a long-term basis that really might only represent a short-term problem, isn't something that we're seeking. But more importantly, we don't want to make short-term decisions that have long-term consequences that we don't understand. It would be really easy, and the biting off your nose to spite your face is a good analogy. We don't want to do something where, this year, we might be able to save money, but next year it costs us two, or three, or four times as much. And so part of that pragmatism is built into these figures as well. So I spoke to this a second ago. It really gets down to, how do we characterize the risk we're facing? Some of them, we're calling structural risk. If there's a tax law change, if there's a court ruling that fundamentally alters the value of property on a long-term basis, that's a reality that we're going to have to live with over several years. And so the strategy for mitigating that potentially is different from one where we might have a freeze emergency and have a temporary spending requirement we weren't counting on, or the price of fuel oil going up or down. We know we might always have those type of issues, but we know that solving the problem is going to be different between tax law changes and the price of fuel fluctuating. And so we wanted to make sure whatever solutions we put in place were sustainable, both if we ratchet up with success from the revenue side, as well as potentially maintaining status quo on the baseline budget, if worst-case happens and we have to hold our own. And so, from that standpoint, it's important to know, that's our basis of judgment. We aren't looking at this like a one-year, the sky is falling kind of an exercise, and we have to go out and find some way to get costs and revenues in line. This is a process that we hope to use from here on forward, as the basis for how the charter lies out, the baseline and supplemental appropriations process. Let me turn it over to Gary to describe a little bit about how we've actually implemented this at the staff level.
Okay. Well, we really began, just like we do any other budget. Myself and Bill, we give department heads direction on how to approach doing their budgets. We would get up to the department head to present what they feel like they need to get the services that they're providing done, and also, if they have any ideas, to provide new services, what that will cost, or if they feel like they're providing services that maybe they shouldn't be, you know, how that will impact the budget. So this year started out really unlike, just like any other year that we do. And then we give department heads time to get their information together, then it's submitted to me, and I give it an initial review and compile all the information. And then, once that is done, Bill and I sit down with each department head and go over line by line, each one of their budgets. And you can imagine how many thousands of line items we have in the budget, you can maybe appreciate how long it takes to do that.
Department heads love that.
Yeah. We love it, too. Yeah. But what was different this year was, we were already starting behind the eight ball, so to speak. Probably 80% of the general fund revenue, we were considering volatile. We are seeing some pretty astronomical increases, which you'll see later on, in some key expense areas. So we were, right off the bat, we were not looking good. But after the initial review, and after I was able to plug everything in and analyze, we had made a pretty good dent in what we were originally looking at, but we were still what we considered $2 million off. And so from that point, we issued a mandate to each department head that, you know, submit to us, if you had to cut 10% across the board on each of your budgets, how would you do that? And that's pretty much how we put it. We just wanted people to think outside of the box. And it wasn't just expense cuts, they could also recommend revenue increases, and we just wanted people to be as creative as they could. And then we had another round of going over their budgets, line by line, again. And there were, the department heads responded quite well, and middle managers, I give them a lot of credit, and they made it a lot easier than what it could have been. And kind of the theme that Bill and I had going in was, we didn't want to reduce the body count, we didn't want to impact employees' scheduled wage increases. We wanted employees to receive the current level of benefits that they are, but we put the challenge on, particularly Susan Bohr, from the HR perspective, to, okay, if we're going to keep benefits at the same level, we need to look at reducing costs. And Susan did a tremendous job, and there's still some work to be done, but as you'll see later, things started happening to the good. And we were able to actually produce the budget that is in front of you. It was by no means an easy budget, but I think it's a very good budget, considering all the circumstances that we were looking at.
Let me offer to, in that, you see the line here where it says it was established at 10%? It would be too easy to look at that as some kind of a flippant level that we just threw out there, but you heard from Gary, $2 million was where the gap was at the end of the day, after we had used all the kind of traditional decision tools to try to get the two lines together. And $2 million is roughly 10% of the budget. So the decision to try to ask for a 10% reduction was specifically linked to that gap that we had at the end of the day. It wasn't just an arbitrary decision.
Yeah. And even though each department, some came very close to 10%, some actually came over 10%, we didn't take all of the recommendations that, we kind of mixed and matched some areas, but you'll see throughout the budget, kind of how we attacked it. So just because a department head submitted, you know, cutting this service, or reducing this service, it's not something that, you know, it's something that we all took a good hard look at, and some things we, you know, put back in into the budget, because we just didn't feel like it was a good thing to do at this time. So much like the capital outlay process, we're going to kind of start out with what we're proposing the baseline budget to be, and that's what the little squiggly lines are at the end, that is, different revenue sources start firming up, and if they're to the good, then we're going to come back to the city commission and say, okay, we're ready to add these items back into the budget. But by doing that, by already having them out, if these revenue sources don't turn out in our favor, they're already not in the budget, so there's no more pain of having to cut those things out. And we felt like that was critical. Again, I know we're probably repeating what we've already said, but we wanted to start out with mostly the worst-case scenario that we could, because we didn't want to be midway through this budget, only to find out we've got to start cutting and cutting drastically. And we just felt like this was the best way to approach this particular budget. These next few pages, they're graphs actually put into the budget books. This is a graph, general fund, and it just shows by, I don't know, by function, how the money is divided up. General government is things like city commission, city manager, finance, HR, those kind of areas, and that's 26% of the budget. Health and safety, that's fire and police, that's 38%. Public works, 16%. Parks and Rec and Arts and Culture, 3%. Transfers out, 17%. Just want to point out on transfers out, a lot of that is dedicated to paying debt service, but there's also three major funds that the general fund is responsible for making sure they balance, and those are the major local street funds and the Lakeview Arena Fund. So when you look at cutting expenses or adding revenue to the general fund side, you also want to take a look at those three funds in particular, because sometimes you can really help your general fund out by decreasing those funds reliance on transfers out. The next slide is the same dollar amounts, but it's just expenses by type in the general fund. Salaries are 38%, fringes, 28%. So right there, 2/3 of the general fund budget is dedicated towards salary and fringes, and investment in employees. And again, we consider the employees our most valuable asset, so we didn't want to harm them in any way. Other charges and services, which is, you know, like your contractual and your office supplies, that kind of thing, that's 17% of the budget. Transfers out, again, 17%. Capital outlay is at 0%. There is some dollars in there, it's just that, dollar-wise, they came to less than half a percent, so the spreadsheet said, I'm going to call that 0. Next is a slide that actually came directly out of the CFO forecast. This is the impact of the tax tribunal cases. This is the impact of the tax tribunal cases. And, we had two major ones filed, We Energies and MGHDLP, they're our two largest taxpayers, but we also had some smaller ones, and those totaled almost $1.4 million to the general fund. Since this time, we've had one or two others, so we're probably looking at somewhere between 1.4 and 1.5 million dollars. And kind of what, this is important at this time, is it's possible these tribunal cases can take a couple of years to go through the system. And what could happen, worst-case scenario, in two years, the tax tribunal says, well, city, we think you're overcharging these people in taxes, so we want you to lower their tax bills now, but also, we want you to go back since the point they filed and refund them that money plus interest. So, we could take, even though this could take two years to settle out, we could take a hit this year, and also next year, at each around 1.4 to 1.5 million dollars each, depending on how the tax tribunal cases turn out.
It's important, too, on this slide, just as a reminder, this negatively impacts the city, potentially in both the short and long term, because the consequences of what Gary is saying is, as soon as an entity files a tribunal case, it locks the use of the money up, because otherwise, you're betting on whether you're going to win or lose and how much you think that might be. And, from that standpoint, whatever wrong bet you make ends up meaning you have to find those dollars later. If you're going to spend these dollars and you lose the case, you have to find this money to pay it back later. So, once it's filed, it instantly locks it up. It also creates a new cost, because we defend our tribunal actions. We don't believe it's in the city's best interest just to accept pennies on the dollar and walk away, and we believe in fairness in the tax system. And so, none of us wants to pay more taxes than what we believe we owe, but that's under our constitution, subject of dispute, that's why the tribunal exists. And if you don't participate in that process, then you've already seated the other side. So, you lose the use of the money for however long the tribunal case goes on, you incur new costs to participate in the tribunal action, and then, of course, whatever the outcome is, whether you win or lose, establishes the baseline for that property moving forward. So, every one of these cases actually carries a triple impact, both immediate and long-term, and kind of everything in between.
Okay. Next slide is kind of a summary of the general fund budget, and it provides a little bit of history, going back to fiscal year 2011, actual data, 2012 actual data, 2013 actual data, 2014, that's the current year we're in now. 2014 is actually a 15-month year, but to make it comparable, we made it look as if it were a 12-month year. So, if you look at the current budget, the numbers we're presenting here are actually lower, because we're trying to show it as if it were a 12-month budget rather than 15, so that it's comparable throughout the document. And then, the 2015 requested budget that you have in front of you right now, and it just kind of gives a history of, you know, where we've been, and it also, very interestingly, shows how we've had gotten the budget to balance over these years. Each one has its challenges. This is probably by far the most difficult one I've ever been involved in, but just for comparative purposes, if you look in the middle, we're comparing 2015 with 2011, you know, how things changed. And if you, as you see, there's an overall increase of 19, 9.2% over that timeframe, which isn't too bad. I mean, we're, we seem to be holding the line pretty well. And you can see where those increases came in at wages at 18%, fringes at almost 31%, supplies and services at 9%, and that's really at the rate of inflation over that period of time. Debt service increased almost 20%, so how did we get the budget to work during those times? Well, as you can see, there's starting to be less capital outlay, and there's starting to be less transfers out. Comparing, going...
Hold on that point for a second, Gary. Transfers out, again, remember, is equivalent terminology for subsidy. So, although it's in red and it's reported, and you might otherwise be tempted to look at that negatively, what you see there is that the general fund has, over that period of time, provided less and less subsidy to other, one of the major funds that, or all of the major funds that Gary mentioned a moment ago, that they're better positioned to hold their own.
Correct. That's one line that, at least on this chart, the more red, the better, because that's less, the general fund has to transfer out to support, you know, the major and local street and Lakeview Arena funds. Looking at the bottom, we compared FY15 with FY14, as if FY14 were a 12-month fiscal year. And as you can see, we've actually cut bottom-line expenses 2.5%. That was even after seeing wages increase 4%, fringes almost 3%, debt service went up almost 7%. We did see a slight increase in transfers out. So, how did we get that to be a negative 2.5%? Well, supplies and services, capital outlay, again, were the two areas that we were able to hit.
Let me offer a point on capital outlay, because I'm sure this will get some questions. This is one of those time-based functions that we're going to try to take advantage of. You heard from the capital investment strategy, we don't want to take out debt to make improvements and then have the rug pulled out from under us because the revenue sources aren't materialized and leave us insolvent. But in this particular case, we have a very short construction cycle, and as we consider this budget, we're at the end of the current one, which means the potential revenue that we would need to bring back the amount of capital outlay that we're doing, isn't required until next summer, which gives us an opportunity to let some of these other more volatile revenue streams settle out, and that would be money, then, that we could directly apply towards moving the capital investment cap back to where it had been, and then, also, to add in maybe some of the other costs that we've been deliberating.
The capital outlay that you're showing here, is that the first tranche?
This would be baseline.
Yes, sir. First tranche, yes.
Yeah.
Have you, I wonder if you could run these numbers that, showing the three tranches, so that we actually see the actual difference between FY11 and FY15, because I think part of the capital outlay difference is because we used to, in 2011, we used to bond for $10 million with outlay, I think, and now we've gone down to four, so.
Uh, yes, we can...
That's been a three-year, I think the $4 million cap has been three years. So, we could show 11, and then, when the $4 million cap hit, and then, we could show between years what the $4 million cap looked like.
Going on to the next slide, this is just kind of a summary, what some of the increases we were looking at when we were sitting down to look at the expense side of the budget. Staff wages were up almost $280,000. Between $40,000 and $50,000 was due to the state minimum wage increase. Police fire retirement, as you, we talked about that quite a bit, the unfunded pension liability in the CFO forecast, which, what is happening is, the pension systems are required to approach how they do their actuarial studies differently now. And, that means cities are more than likely, particularly if you're underfunded, are going to have to start contributing more to your systems in order to try to get them more actuarial sound. And, in this case, the police fire was up almost a quarter of a million dollars. It's not a fault of the people, you know, that are policemen and firemen, it's just strictly the new rules that came down as to how these numbers have to be calculated. Utilities, we're looking at in the general fund, increases of $25,000. Another reason the tax tribunal cases are important is not only because of decreased revenue, but we also have to pay money to defend those cases. And net, even though the county and Marissa, I believe, have, are going to contribute to the We Energies case, we're still looking at a net for all the tax tribunal cases of having to add in $150,000 in the general fund to defend those cases. And then, we still have the unreimbursed emergency freeze. I know Kurt Goodman is working on a grant, actually, to help get some money, and he's very positive that we will get some reimbursement for that. Problem is, we don't know when that reimbursement's going to happen, and right now, we're just optimistic we are going to get something, but we don't know how, and we don't know when.
We wouldn't buy a meal with that promise.
Yeah.
Let me offer on this, just to clarify, too, all staff wages, management and bargaining unit are being treated the same. There's no differentiation between the increases as we've applied them. Commissioner Coines, sir, you've raised in the past kind of the challenges with public fund investments. What you're seeing, and again, to reiterate, this caused some concern when the staff heard this earlier, like somehow the police or fire retirees were at fault, that nothing could be further from the truth, following all of the financial crisis that we had, the investment rules changed. And, rather than seeing the increases in that fund come from shrewd investments over time, the managers are no longer able to invest those funds to get the kind of returns that they were getting before that financial crisis. So now, all of those public funds are invested in the most risk-free possible investments that you can determine by law. There's not a lot of interest income or dividends on risk-free investments, and so, more and more and more of the burden of those pension contributions are being placed on the direct contributions themselves, as opposed to any kind of return on investment those funds used to make. And right now, for every dollar we're putting in, instead of getting $1.50 or $1.75 or something back, we're getting $1.3. And so, it's essentially about as close as a one-to-one payment that you could possibly make. What that means in order for us, then, if we're underfunded, to get back into the properly-funded range, is it's essentially just cash out of our pocket. Utilities, you're well aware of the costs and the challenges with the energy sector. We've covered the MTT cases, and we're working hard to make sure that we're putting our best foot forward with the freeze emergency. Let me kind of, in summary, I wanted to read this verbatim, because I think it's a worthwhile statement to make for the record, and I think it's important for the community to hear this. What we've proposed for the fiscal year 2015 budget will put Marquette in a strong position to mitigate what we believe is unprecedented economic uncertainty, to control our spending, to hold our taxes at current levels, and to invest in initiatives that promote growth and the potential to revitalize our economy. We believe what we're proposing does so in as fiscally responsible a manner possible, it's consistent with the city charter, and it will keep our city fiscally sound while providing the best level of service possible to all the constituents here in the city of Marquette. And with that, Your Honor, that kind of concludes our opening statements. We booked time, if the commissioner would like to have any question or answer, otherwise, I'll ask Gary to lead us directly into the individual budget discussions. Commissioner Ryan?
I'd like to get just a few hard numbers on the revenue. I know what you're saying, and I buy into the philosophy, but just, you know, before we go into the process, are you anticipating general fund revenues of just under $19 million? Is that, is this the...
Correct.
18973?
Yeah.
Specifically, what are the volatile revenues we're not counting?
We're trying not to count as much as possible, the statutory revenue sharing...
And what, what, potentially, would that...
Potentially, $350,000.
$350,000, okay.
We also add 1.4, the 1.5 million in tax tribunal cases. Personal property tax, there was the recent vote to abolish personal property tax. Now, we know we're going to get some kind of reimbursement, and we'll get more in detail later on personal property tax, but we're just unsure, when you work through the math, it doesn't work the way the state says it's going to. So, we consider some of that volatile, not all of it, but we're basically looking at, you know, roughly $2 million of general fund revenue to be volatile.
So, the number you're using for personal property tax is...
As of now, and like I said, we'll get into that later, but as of right now, as far as we know, it's a good number, but until we go through the process, we aren't going to know, so.
So, based on what you just told me, it's $300,000 or so, if you're using $2 million?
Well, it's, there's other factors as well, like grants, interest, that kind of a thing. So, we were just basically looking at overall $2 million.
One other question, the unimbursed freeze expenses, wouldn't they be, you know, expenses for the current year?
They are expenses for the current year, and they go...
The carryover.
Yep. And it just depends when we get reimbursed as to when that money comes in, so we don't know if we'll get reimbursed this fiscal year yet or not.
So, we're not budgeting any expenditures? I mean, we already spent the money in this current fiscal year, right?
Correct. But there could be some carryover, like a public works department, as they go through their stuff, they're finding things that are related to the freeze now, and that could carry over into the next fiscal year. Could be next year, too, before we find some of these issues.
Those costs, that cost isn't carried in a direct line item, per se, the historical cost, it's pure fund balance. We took that out, that's why we have that, is to respond to emergencies, and so, we're carrying that as a fund balance deficit until we get the money paid back.
Well, then, just a bookkeeping question, you know, where will those charges eventually wind up, in this year or next year, or...
We don't know, depends when we receive them.
Typically, if you spend money this year, it's this year, right?
Yeah.
The money we've spent?
But after we've closed out the fiscal year, and we're going through the audit, and we still haven't received them, they won't count towards this year, but if we do receive them later...
You're talking about revenues?
Correct, revenues, yeah.
Yeah, we're booking, we're reporting the costs as they come in, it's the repayment that we, we don't really have a firm understanding of if or when we'll be paid back for any of this.
I understand we've broken these out for purposes of hopefully getting some reimbursement, but they really just become operating costs of the city as we go, if we went through the winter.
Yeah, no, under the Stafford Act, FEMA gives, FEMA has a five-year window, and then, there's appeal process with that. So, there's still some dispute between the state and the federal government about how they're going to handle these costs and what the timeline for reporting them will be. So, we're complying with all of the reporting side, and we're spending the money to make the repairs that we need to make, but it's like an insurance settlement. We won't know until that process plays itself out, when and how much we might be getting compensated for. In the meantime, the state of Michigan announced through the MEDC, an emergency community development block grant program. Actually, Kurt Goodman this evening's working on getting our final submission in, and we're hopeful that some portion of the $6 million that the governor announced will be available will come our way. But it might not happen this summer, might not happen this fiscal year.
Just one more question, Gary, of the $2 million, you know, that might fall into some tranche somewhere, how much of that did we kind of assign toward capital outlay?
Uh, I don't recall right offhand, I believe it's in the budget book, the three tranches that we had, so.
Pretty good chunk of that.
It's a little harder to say, because a good bit of the capital outlay, you know, we do with the bond issue.
Right.
So, that's a little bit harder to answer, but if you look at page 10 in your budget book, that presents the three tranches that we had for capital outlay. But it's, it's hard to equate the $2 million with specifically those things, because this capital outlay is coming from all areas, including the utility funds, and what we're talking about earlier was strictly related to the general fund.
I think maybe, sir, a good way to look at that would be, we're coming in 75% less than what we did with the $4 million budget cap.
Right.
So, the, kind of, the debt service payments are about a quarter of what they would have otherwise been.
Yeah, if we look at, if we look at the capital outlay chart in your presentation here... here, you had $502,011 and $51,000 this year, so.
Well, we have a combination of debt and general fund, direct general fund expenditures on capital. So what Gary's showing is just the general fund expenditures on capital outlay.
I guess I'm saying, even if, even if we, everything turns out hunky-dory as far as all the revenues we'd like to get, we're still not sitting on a pile of money.
That's exactly right. And not all of it was going to be, if, in a perfect world, if all of the volatile revenue comes in in our favor, it wasn't all going to be applied towards capital outlay, because we have some other areas, too, which you'll see as we go through the budget, that we would kind of like to do, and...
I guess part of the challenge, when we discussed this, and it was in our letter of transmittal, that we'd reported that we're adding to the fund balance. In past years, if you were in incremental budget, that would mean that you were making money. That somehow the fees that you were collecting from tourist parks were way in excess of what you thought they might have been, or that there's actually some kind of net income after all the costs are covered, and there's money left over going into the fund balance. When you go through zero-based budgeting, you're cutting down to the point where you can maintain, in the worst possible case, a decent level of city services moving forward. But that additional money, that's not immediately included in the baseline budget, is what you're using to fund the tranches. So in the baseline, in the budget transmittal letter we put together, Gary was saying that we've got a baseline budget that is about $500,000 below what the implementation of that budget would be. But if we have $2.5 million worth of additional spending that we want to do, whether it's for capital improvements or for operational expenditures, having a half million dollar in the bank is a good start. But without the other $2 million that, that need to go into that, you're not going to be able to accomplish all the goals that the city has. And potentially mitigates any other kind of unforeseen things that might pop up in the meantime. So it means looking at that fund balance a little bit differently. There's certainly going to be tranches that that money already will apply to, whether it's the commission view of capital investments, or whether it's an additional operating cost. But we still need more revenue to accomplish everything that, that we'd like to do this year.
So then the debate comes as to which tranche it goes into.
Well, yeah, exactly. And so from a capital standpoint, that's why we were saying, the good news is capital projects are always in the summertime. So at least we have a little bit of leeway from a time standpoint, where hopefully some of these revenues will firm up and take some of that, that pressure off.
I do. Gary, could I ask you a question? What's the approximate value of 1 mil right now? What does it produce?
In the transmittal letter, we stated at $677,000.
$677,000. Okay. My next question is, if the worst, sort of semi-worst-case scenario comes about that we are $1.5 million loss in the tax tribunal cases, that value of 1 mil will go down significantly.
It's going down quite a bit.
I hadn't thought of that, but what that does is it, then, it lessens the amount of money that we can tax for considerably.
Correct, yes.
And that even makes it sound worse. It's not just we're losing $1.5 million, we lose the value of 1 mil probably down to, it's not fair to ask you, but you know, less than $600,000.
Yeah, it'd probably be close to $600,000.
Well, that's a real issue. That's a real problem for the future.
That's why we identify those as structural risks.
Structural what?
Structural risks. That would be a long-term risk, that if that happened, we would be living with the consequences of that judgment for a long time. It wouldn't just be a one-year cash flow kind of a problem. It would be a new, a new norm.
Yeah. Well, I think that needs to, why I ask that, it really needs to be, that point needs to be made, because it really straps us in the future.
The worst possible thing, we've come to expect tax law changes, and you've seen that. We've had EVIP, we've had changes in statutory revenue sharing, there have been all kinds of different tax laws passed that give certain classes of property owners break. The residents of the state repealed personal property tax for small businesses. We see that and have become aware of that potential challenge over time. But the most insidious ones that we have, that not only undermine the underpinnings of our financial, financial health and well-being, but also just basic fairness and equity in the community, are tribunal cases. Because it's essentially somebody coming up and saying, "I don't want to pay this anymore." And, and if it's the biggest taxpayers in the community, every, we're a nation founded on complaining about taxes, so I'm not speaking to it on, on a visceral level. But when you've got your highest, highest paying taxpayers all deciding that they just don't want to pay, they want the same level of services, and they want the same level of support, they just don't want to pay what they've always paid for it, it's a very slippery slope.
Well, if, just to continue this, it's a slippery slope, but it's also, you can't keep running a city on less and less, you know, you can't run a city for $2 million less this year and $2 million the next year without doing one thing, and that's raising taxes. And when you're, so far, it's sort of equal how we pay taxes. And then if you have a $2 million piece of property, you say it's only, I don't want to pay $1 million, then guess who's going to have to pick that up? Everybody else in the community. And everybody else in the community ought to understand that.
Yep.
And this is a perfect example of what, what's going to happen. The average person is going to have to have their taxes raised in order to run the city. That needs to be pointed out to people, rather than, you know, yay, everybody's, you know, we Energy's going to pay $1 million less taxes. Well, that means, if we want to have a city, you, me, and my neighbors are going to have to pay more.
That's absolutely correct, sir. At the end of the day, whatever it costs to deliver the government people want, somebody's going to have to pay for it.
Okay.
And we had, just as an aside, we had as part of the recent election, Proposition 1, that was talking about repealing the personal property taxes. And the proposal, and part of why the math is kind of fuzzy, is not just on the revenue calculation side, but the proposal will make whole all of the local communities that lost that revenue through the use tax. You've heard that from various different sources. Well, the use tax in, in regular language is sales tax on every transaction where money changes hands. So instead of small businesses paying directly some level of tax, consumers are now paying, paying whatever that difference is. That's how they'll make local governments whole. So that transaction shifted the tax from small business onto anybody who uses money to buy stuff. And in this particular case, tribunals basically say, okay, if your costs are fixed, and these taxpayers don't want to pay, pay their, the taxes at the level they've been paying, and we don't reduce costs somehow, that this is how much the, the community wants to spend on their government, somebody else is going to have to make up the difference. And so it's a very slippery slope, particularly in America. Nobody likes to pay taxes. We try to provide the best value possible, and we try to be responsive to what the policy demands of the community are. Our first inclination, like we were saying in the beginning of the briefing, wouldn't be to raise taxes. It would be a way to, to cut services. Because we believe at this point, given all the other charges that people face with government, whether it's their water utilities, or electrical utilities, or sewer utilities, or other kind of transactions that they have, that's a pretty substantial burden on the way they choose to live already. And adding higher taxes to that won't make Marquette a more desirable place. So our first inclination, as your administration, is to find a way, rather than to keep taxes skyrocketing, is to do away with things that maybe the community doesn't care as much about anymore, or hopefully, that they don't care as much about anymore, before we have to get to a point where we have to have some very serious discussions about how we want to live as a community. For Tim Stoneholtz?
Just a question of general philosophy, as we were talking through burning down the fund balance to handle some of the freeze expenses, and the potential that recaptures some of the money that we did expend on the fund balance, or from the fund balance for the freeze. Is our, is it our intention then, or your intention, that what we get back, we put back into fund balance to try and make that whole?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
Just one quick point, I forgot to mention it, but I appreciate that, I think Gary said it, the term, "We're trying to buy time." And I think that's a, that's, that's a good approach. You know, we want to be prudent, but not panicked at this point. You know, we're, we're still very fiscally sound, and I think, you know, we're looking at ways to, not to destroy what the city does, but to move forward in a positive way, but, but to be prudent about it. So I think that's a very good, very good term to use. We're trying to buy time, because we've never been faced with this kind of volatility before that, that I'm aware of. So I think that's pretty good.
Any other commissioners? Any questions? Comments? Okay, shall we move forward?
Sure. The next thing is the wage and fringe benefit overview. This is something Susan Bohr usually does, but she probably scheduled her vacation to coincide with this.
So she's at, she's at our mercy now? How did, how did she do that?
Yeah. So I'll be presenting, I'll just give a brief overview. I'm not going to go into any great detail, but Susan did write everything out, and we previously furnished it to the city commission. But basically, it just says that for salaries and wages, we're looking at mostly 2% increases on the contracts. We are also going to treat management personnel the same. Part-time wages, we saw the minimum wage increase, and that's going to be between $40,000 and $50,000 additional cost to the city. Then we have the additional fringe benefits. I'll let you read through that. Really nothing to note. On the health, dental, and vision prescription drug coverage, this is where we're really anticipating we're going to see some savings. Initially, when we got the new rates for the fiscal year, overall, we were looking at, I think it was like a 13% increase. And so we immediately set out, you know, we don't want to reduce coverage, but we do want to explore ways to, to lessen that cost, and that's something that Susan worked very hard on. And we're anticipating, I'm going to commit her to this, because she's not here, but we're, we're going to anticipate, we're going to see some substantial savings of probably overall, close to $400,000 in the general fund, over $500,000 citywide. And that's really, and you can read in detail, I know enough just to confuse the heck out of everybody with it. So please read through it. When Susan gets back, August 25th, she'll be available to answer questions. As you'll see, when we get into the budget, we weren't sure how to put some of it into the budget, so I'll show you how we presented that, just so that we are reflecting that I am committing Susan to finding that money for us, so. And I'm glad she's not in the country, because otherwise, she'd be pretty angry with me. Then it gets into the pension funds. Again, we really went into that in the great depth, in the CFO forecast. And if anybody's poking around on the website, the CFO forecast is on the website, and you can look at what we're looking at, what was that, like a couple of months ago now, I guess? But really, the name of the game is, we're required to, to pay higher costs, because the actuaries have to figure out how much each municipality owes. It's not just a city and Marquette problem, it's a problem just about every community in the entire country is going to have to face. And we're seeing higher pension costs as a result. And also, not this fiscal year, but the next fiscal year, we're going to have to present some numbers, which are going to make the city look like it's, on the surface, is not doing too well. But in actuality, we'll still be in good shape, is our projection, so. The last few sheets are just pages, really pretty much directly from the actuariales. You can read through those to see what we're looking at when we sit down and look at the fringe benefit rates, and how much we have to pay for fringe benefits. I know I didn't do it justice, but like I said, Susan prepared it, and I think she did a really good job. And so if you have a few minutes to read through it, you'll understand where we're going with it.
We're also planning, Your Honor, we know at some point after the four scheduled meetings, depending on the mood of the commission, you'll want a wrap-up of some type, and so this would be something we could add in for more detail at that time, too.
I do have one quick question on this, I think you could probably answer it, Gary. We're in here, it says, "Employees who've opted out of the city's coverage our budget as though they've not opted out. Any cost savings associated with these opt-outs is dedicated to fund the city's unfunded accrue liabilities." We don't fund our OPEB. What do we do with that money?
We hope to, this was a language that was in each contract, and it was originally worded to fund unused, sick and vacation time, so that when people retire and they get these...
So you don't have this big...
Big hefty payouts, we have the money there.
Right.
But Susan has worked hard to get the language changed to where we can apply that to our other unfunded liabilities. So at some point, we're going to come up with a plan on how we're best going to fund these unfunded liabilities. We're kind of waiting to see how Gatsby's going to treat the OPEB. I can pretty much guess now, but we want to wait for the official version, to see if we're better off putting extra money into the pension plans, or more towards the OPEB is kind of what we're going to be looking at, so.
Okay.
So stay tuned on that. Okay, now we're getting into the actual budget books, page 39. Prior to page 39, there's some really good information. Bill and I came up with the transmittal letter, there's some really good information, which kind of gives a good overview of what's in the budget book and what we'll be presenting. There's also some good charts and graphs, which, everything in here pertains to the overall city budget. But we're going to start on page 39. This starts the general fund revenues, and the proposed budget is on the city website, so anybody who's listening at home, please feel free to go to the city website, and it's in the budgets section, under 2014-15 proposed budget. And you'll see the exact, the actual same sheets that we're looking at here now. We're going to start, even though pages 39 through 45 are the entire general fund revenues, we're just going to focus on the top part, which are the non-departmental revenues. And I'm going to have Diane come up and speak on the property tax, particularly the real personal property tax. And while she's doing that, I'm going to have a handout, just to show you what a, kind of a nightmare this personal property tax is going to be for us.
Thanks.
The, the red comments that you see there are the comments that I, I put in, in the form, because I was trying to find the right rates and amounts, and I think this is more of an assessing form. But I just want to run through a little bit about the personal property tax reform. That reform actually had two exemptions. One is the small taxpayer personal property exemption, and that is for any commercial business that has under $80,000, that would be exempted once they make their affidavit filings. And the one thing about that is that if they do not file, they can be put on the tax roll. So it's very important that they file at the applicable time. The other exemption was the eligible manufacturing personal property exemption. And that actually has two exemptions. One is for new, and one is for the existing eligible manufacturing personal property. And you can see there, I do have a sheet that runs through some of the requirements, and that is not all, there are a lot more than what is on here. The eligible manufacturing personal property is a one-time exemption filing, so the individual or the business would have to, to make that... So the individual or the business would have to, to make that one-time exemption affidavit. They would not have to file it every year like the small taxpayer personal property. The eligible manufacturing personal property exemption is going to be phased in from year 2016 through 2022. So that's in the future. The small taxpayer personal property exemption was actually, uh, on the tax roll for 2014. So for the current tax year that is in effect. And the state wanted to get that into effect before there was even a vote taken. So they felt it was that important. So that's why you're seeing a little bit of a decrease on the personal property tax revenue in the budget. Because you're feeling the effects of that right now. So how are they going to fund or reimburse the city for the loss of those revenues? Well, for the eligible manufacturing personal property exemption, they have set up, or they are levying a new state essential services assessment on those particular individuals. And again, that is going to start in 2016. So that's two years out. Uh, the, the taxpayer will have to submit statements and, uh, to the state. And, uh, there are certain deadlines that they will have to meet. Now, if they do not meet any of those deadlines and they do not file any forms or affidavits, then the assessor can put those properties back on the tax roll. So I'm sure there is going to be a lot of confusion out there on how this is going to work. And we still, um, are getting information on that. So it's, at this time, it's, as Gary had said earlier, it's a little bit fuzzy.
Should, should note also, and it might be an underlying theme you're picking up on, but most of the burden of figuring this out will fall on local officials. And most of the burden will fall on the assessors. And again, currently we don't have an assessor. And so you get a sense, apart from just the regular duty and, and role that function plays in government, this greatly complicates then also our revenue strategy.
We also have, of course, our police and fire services, which are considered essential services. So the state is going to reimburse the city with the increase in their use tax that they are anticipating. They, um, do have a calendar on the reimbursements. And if you look at the calculation, I have identified the, uh, dates. And I just got some of the dates today from some of the treasurers downstate. But the state's intent is that for October of 2014, they would reimburse the city the debt rate. And they will not reimburse the city operating loss until October of 2015. So that's going to hurt us a little bit. And what else? I guess, um, this, this form is, is, I believe, an assessing form. And so I've put in the numbers that I could find and hopefully it's pretty accurate. It's only an estimate, estimate at this time, and I'm sure there is another form that the assessing office will have to file. But based on the calculation, they are comparing the 2013 taxable value with the 2014 taxable value. And then you get your pluses and minuses for your commercial and industrial, as well as your, um, IFT facility, coming down to the three million, almost three million two loss for the small taxpayer exemption. And that equates to approximately a hundred thirty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars in taxes for the 2014 year. Now, unless there is, is another calculation somewhere, that's, that's what I'm coming up with. And it, the funny thing about this is that it runs it out through the year 2016. And of course, we don't have any, um, millages for 2015 or 2016 at this time. So we're using our estimate as best we know at this time.
So, again, what you're hearing is again, the inherent risk in the replacement revenue stream. It assumes a certain value, future value for property. We don't know if it's realistic or not. It puts the burden for the first couple of years on the city's, uh, fund balance to cover. And then it reimburses us at some future unknown rate, at some future unknown time. And we know the immediate impact is already less than what we would have captured had the personal property tax stayed in place. And so that's why we don't include that in the baseline budget.
Commissioner Ryan?
So you are plugging five hundred and ninety-six thousand into the budget, is that correct? As opposed to seven hundred and sixty-seven last year? So what is the, what is the opportunity here? I mean, what, what's, what's the potential high side? Any, any idea at all? I have no idea what this says, by the way. I have to be very honest about that. And that's not a criticism.
I hate to say it, but we don't know what it says either.
This is the form sent to us.
Let me, let me offer to, sir, and this isn't, truly, when this first came up, we were invited to participate with the lieutenant governor in a public forum where this was rolled out. In true awkward fashion, we managed to admit that we really hadn't had a chance to evaluate the full consequences. And as a result, he offered us the opportunity to speak directly to the treasury officials who formulated this. Uh, we had the mayor and mayor pro tem, uh, the CFO and I in that conference call chatting with them. And here we are today, uh, with a level of knowledge after speaking directly to the experts who, who formulated this. So it's not something where I believe the city of Marquette is alone in that confusion. This number is as good at this point as any number that we could pick based on our initial understanding of how the formula works. We will be tracking it over time because one of the things we'd like to be able to provide feedback on is how the calculations worked and what the long-term impact will be on the city. So that potentially our legislators in Lansing, if this really starts turning into something that becomes a far more negative impact, will be armed to maybe go out and reevaluate whether they want to update the statute again or come up with a different strategy.
So unlike the other categories, there's no huge potential upside here, I mean?
No, in fact, it's, we're seeing that it to be possibly huge downside to it is kind of how we're looking at it.
Part of, part of the initial discussion that spoke about the source of the replacement revenue was that there was going to be a, a greater reliance on internet use tax. So the people who are paying transactions on their use of the internet, somehow that revenue stream was going to increase over the course of the next year. And that was going to be used to, to cover the, the personal property tax stream that was voted out. And we expressed some concern about that because right now there is no process for collecting that other than a one-time honorary admission by people who are filing their personal property taxes. Or their, excuse me, their personal income taxes. And so, uh, at this point, when you take no other compliance or enforcement activity and count on, uh, ten million people voluntarily stating that they owe more taxes than what they might have otherwise claimed, we thought that was probably an unrealistic expectation. And so a part of this is the state has said they will make communities whole. We don't know what that means yet. If that revenue stream isn't realized, where else they might get it? From the state's budget? We don't know what that impact could create. We don't know. So consequently, we're, we're making the best estimate we can. But there's, there's no upside to this one. There's potentially more severe downside.
And just so there's no misunderstanding, my, my criticism was not of you or the document you've put together. It's the law apparently that forces us to try to figure something like this out.
Well, we were saying the same, exact same stuff, yeah.
This isn't my form.
But I want to thank Diane. She did yeoman's work in doing this. Like she said, it is a form the assessors will have to do. And since we don't have an assessor, pretty much last minute, I threw it at Diane, pretty much expecting her to wad it up and throw it right back at me. But I figured if anybody could crunch through the numbers and try to make some sense of it, she could do it. And I just can't give her enough credit for at least attempting the exercise. After having gone through it, we're still not quite sure what it's saying, but it does give us some comfort that the number we do have budgeted, looks like it's a good number for now. But like Bill said, we'll continue to monitor it and see how it all shakes out, so.
Gary, Gary, in this, in this, uh, revenue here under reimbursement, we've got three hundred and forty thousand. What is that, who's reimbursing us what?
Oh, yes, I'll get to that. So if we're done with personal property tax, thank you Diane. So the way to read the budget in general, we present three years of actual history, starting with 2010, 11. Then we show 11, 12, 12, 13. And these are actual audited numbers. Uh, the 13, 14, even though it was a 15-month budget, we're showing just the 12-month portion. The year-end estimate now is a 15-month estimate. We weren't quite sure how we could easily do a 12-month year-end estimate. Just because the way all the systems work and that kind of a thing. And then we show the requested amount for next fiscal year, which is 2015. Uh, the top part of it is mostly property tax related. This is why we need an assessor to give us all the information that we need. Before Sue Bovan left, she did give us all the information she had at the time. And I don't think anything has changed, uh, since she left. So I think these numbers are still good. Pretty much going down, probably closer to the middle of that section, if you look at the 574 account, far left-hand side are the actual account numbers we use in our system. So if you look at 101 dash 000 dash 574, that's state revenue sharing. And what we've been doing for the past three or four years, uh, we only budget for the constitutional portion. We consider the statutory portion to be volatile, so we don't budget for that at all. However, that part does show up under the actual figures. Guess it was a couple, three years ago, the state came up with the EVIP program, which made it even more volatile. Now they're doing away with EVIP, but we're still considering the statutory portion to be volatile. So what you see here is only the constitutional portion. Now I'm very confident we'll at least get some kind of statutory revenue sharing. And if everything goes to the way, uh, the state budget is, we should see about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in statutory revenue sharing. So that's money that, you know, as it comes in, we'll add that to the tranche level. Going down a couple of lines, cable TV franchise, that's just our best guess at the moment. I was really getting concerned about that line, uh, because more and more people were starting to drop, to drop cable TV. But there has recently been, I think it was like a Supreme Court decision or some high-level court decision, which should help stabilize some of that for a while. So the number we have in, it's just a best guess at the time. That's something we'll monitor, too. That also ties into a fund we'll talk about later with Dan, the PEG funds. Because some of that is tied into cable TV as well. And then, uh, we get into like fines and interest. Reimbursements, as I spoke earlier, um, when Justice Susan was leaving to literally go out of the country, uh, she told me she anticipated at least three hundred and forty thousand dollars of the health insurance, uh, cost reduction she was looking at. Didn't know how to plug it into the expense side. She couldn't tell me how that would work on the expense side. So I just plugged it in as a revenue to kind of offset that. It works budget-wise. Once she gets back and we can figure out the expense side of the budget, we'll plug that in on the expense side and take that out of the revenue. But just to show that we were reflecting those savings, that's how I put it in the budget for this year. Then, uh, payment and lieu of tax, that's also a big source of revenue. That comes, a good portion of it comes from the BLP and the city's utilities, the water sewer and the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, we also get small portions for, uh, MISHDA-owned properties. And then the transfers in, oh, I'm sorry.
That does not reflect any kind of net income transfer from the BLP. Does not reflect any kind of net income transfer from the BLP for the charter.
Well, um, kind of have to look at the 12-month budget because the year-end estimate is based on 15 months. So the 12-month estimate, we're actually seeing just a very slight increase in that. The last item in non-departmental, transfer in, that is, uh, something we just started doing, I think, maybe a couple of years ago, to where, uh, it's how we treat the motor pool fund. Really for quite some time, we were giving people a discounted rate on the motor pool fund. And then I think a couple of years ago is when we changed how we were going, going to account for that, to where we're charging each fund what their full motor rate, motor pool rate should be. But then at the end of the year, we're going to have the motor pool refund its excess contribution, so to speak. Bottom line, same difference, just a little bit different way of looking at it. So in order to, uh, so we're saying the general fund portion of the motor pool excesses is a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. And that ends the non-departmental revenues. Uh, next we can start getting to expenses, unless you have any other questions on non-departmental revenues. As each department comes up, we'll also talk about the revenue in their particular sections. So there will be discussion on those items later. So next we're ready to get in the expense side, page 48. And the way the expense side works, the first page number is what we call a fact sheet. It shows what department we're talking about. It shows, gives a brief explanation of what that department does. We also show, so that you don't have to keep going back to the revenue page if it's a general fund, we've already cut and pasted the revenue part out, so it's right there, so you don't have to keep going back and forth. Then we show the authorized positions and the salary, uh, that we've plugged in. And then the last section, uh, each department has a little bit of leeway as to show, you know, what are they accomplishing through the way of program statistics? And then the next page is usually the, uh, actual expense page. Each line item is the exact same line items that we all look at internally. So you're going to see exactly what we look at. And when I say we literally have thousands of lines, you're going to see the exact same thousands of lines that Bill, I, and each department head, we literally go through each and every single line and dissect it.
See the looks of joy on everybody's face.
So that's basically, uh, the presentation. And now we're, we're going to do the parade of various individuals that are going to present their, uh, individual budgets. And we can start that now on page 48.
Let me offer this offer to, a lot of people, uh, out there might be interested. The city manager's office, we refer to that as the CMO. Uh, we look at that internally as a department in and of itself. Uh, the departmental manager actually isn't the city manager in this case. It's Wendy Larson. She's our office manager. She has a management analyst working for General Page. I know the city commission is well aware of what they do for you. So she is the one who along with, with myself advocates for your budget. Uh, so page 48, page 49, this is actually your budget. Uh, what we believe reflects the best starting point for the year. Uh, what you'll see is it's actually pretty flat compared to last year. Uh, we have a few, few additional items that we've added in, uh, predominantly reflecting what we saw that was a, a increase in MML commitments and travel. But otherwise, you'll see last year was about a hundred and eleven thousand. Well, the current year is about a hundred and eleven thousand, next year is about a hundred and eighteen thousand, so it's relatively flat. You'll also see there's part of the 15-month budget, a lot of the preliminary costs for the upcoming MML convention are booked in. the upcoming MML convention are booked in there. They'll be carried over potentially. And you'll also notice below that on line 881, with the community promotions passed through, the type of 2% money that we typically receive in support of the community organizations, we not really know what that is yet. We expect we'll be filling that in as we get notifications from our tribal partners. If there aren't any requests, I'll keep moving on. The next budget we'd like to go through will be the executive budget, that's the CMO proper. You'll see, with the exception of wages, it's pretty flat across most of the categories. The two things I'd point out is that for wages, this reflects kind of the transition of Carl being rededicated 100% to the community services department and bringing Kyle onboard. It also reflects, you'll see a note for the health insurance. This reflects the loss of the court case in regards to the benefits for past city manager and other officers. So we would equally be on the same trend that Gary was describing for the rest of staff, but for that case. And I think you'll see across most of the other areas, it's either flat or you're seeing some reductions. So we're trying to hold the line on costs. And not trying to really increase the basic spend rate that you've become accustomed to. When Carl was Assistant City Manager and Community Services, I believe, I don't think Carl is here, but I think the split was 50-50 across both. That's always something that the department heads have to tell us how they want to have it reported. This reflects part of his year, still in the CMO, and then Kyle coming onboard. So that's really what, apart from the 15-month budget, you see is the surge in the middle. I'm going to ask Gary to go over Finance Department, page 52, 53.
Nothing to see here, it's a $2 billion budget, so we're good. So, next.
Looking to see if you're awake.
Yeah, this is the Finance Department budget, and within the, we have the overall Financial Services Department, which includes finance, treasurer, and assessing, and also utility billing. And just within the Finance Department itself, we have three personnel, myself, we have a staff accountant, Mary Schlitt, and accounts payable clerk, Vicki Smith. And you can see the wages we have there on page 52. And then, at the bottom, you can see the statistics that we track, just kind of, you know, nothing really changes that much, but we do stay quite busy. Going to page 53, the changes, usually this budget is fairly steady, the changes from what we've done in the past. We had a small amount for overtime, $600, we cut that out. For the 101, 202, 801, professional and contractual, we actually increased that by $10,000 this year, because we're going to have to do another GASB 45, which is the OPEB actuarial. We have to do those, I think, every three years. So every three years, you're going to see probably like a $10,000 jump. The other changes in this department, we're cutting out pretty much all travel, transportation, and that was mostly for conferences and that kind of thing. We're still going to make sure we're getting educated the way we are, but we have found some cheaper ways.
And also, not in the first tranche. It's an important thing to keep in the back of your mind. This is the starting position.
Correct.
We are disinvesting in training for staff, but we don't want to start out making that one of the baseline expenses that we can't live without to run the city. So as some of those revenues are realized, we fully intend to come back and ask for some of these funds to be restored to what they typically are.
I think regular MEL, Gary. Do I have to point out, I don't think you made the 10% reduction.
Yeah, well, it was kind of hard to do, because we are already very, and you'll see that in a lot of departments, they're already pretty much bare bones. Believe me, a plan was submitted to make the 10%, but we, I let Bill make the call on that one, because I was personally invested in.
Mr. Coin?
Are you going to, if money comes available, are you going to have like a tranche fight, or do you have a list?
What we did with the capital improvements, you saw, there was a recommended list of things we should spend money on in a baseline budget where we want to start. And we went through department by department, and they gave us their justification, which included, we're not going to buy as much fire suppressant in the beginning of the year, we're going to wait and then buy it as needed later in the year. We're not going to do training at this point as part of the baseline, because it typically happens later in the year. Looking at things, even, Community Services had some novel ideas. They don't lay in ice typically until September for the season, and so they came up with a Plan A, Plan B. If we don't get enough money to run the full season, what would it look like for a shorter season? What would it look like if we changed around some of the configurations of the rinks and the way people are using them? But all of that is a great time-based requirement, because the ice that we're putting in for this season is paid for in the current year budget. We have a full year to wait to see how all of those revenues stabilize before we have to start thinking about next year.
My question is, who's going to decide that? You or us?
We'll come back with a recommendation, and so there will certainly be some administrative process that we're going to go through, very similar to what we're sitting here now. But each one of the tranches, to the extent that it's still our responsibility to make a recommendation on what we think the mix is, we'll come in with a very specific recommendation, and we'll explain our basis of judgment. But again, of course, it's all up to the commission or any alternative you might pick otherwise.
Okay, thank you.
Just real quickly, some other changes. The next-to-last line item, the repair and maintenance, we're recommending, we had some maintenance contracts out on the mill meter and folding machine, and those were really starting, the costs were starting to exceed what it would, to where we were going to probably recommend, we'd do away with those anyway. But we did officially take those out of the budget, and if these machines do break down, there will be some type of costs to that, but at least as far as the first tranche, the machines are still in good repair. So we're not thinking, knock on wood, anything is going to break, but we are going to dispense with going with the, making its contracts on those. And the last line is rental, that is the mill meter. You know, we do have to mill things, so we're stuck with that. But as you'll see, too, a lot of these smaller budgets, they're more labor-intensive, and that's why some of these budgets, you aren't going to see a 10% cut, because they're more labor-intensive. And the only way to really meet the 10% was to either take drastic wage cuts or lay off people. And that's kind of what we're trying to avoid as much as possible. And so I just wanted to mention that, that in these smaller type budgets, particularly mine, it's more labor-intensive, and there's, just aren't as many areas to cut money as in some of your larger departments that have a little more leeway in doing so.
Mr. Coin?
Could I ask another question? 99.9% of the people listening, if there are any, tonight on television, have no idea what a tranche is.
Yes.
Because I sure didn't know what it was before you explained it. Could you explain it for the 99.9% who have no idea what it means?
Absolutely, sir. It's a phase. It would be maybe another way to look at it. It's a term that describes a cut, a line in the sand where a decision is made. And so, we start out on October 1st with the baseline budget. And over the course of the year, I believe we're looking at a quarterly tranche. So every three months, we're going to evaluate what revenues, if any, have firmed up, and come back to you with a recommendation for what additional costs we can add back into the budget. And so there will be a baseline budget, a tranche after that in three months, tranche after that in three months, and throughout the rest of the year. And so it's basically, if you were building a house, it would be your basic house, your Phase 1 addition could be a garage, your Phase 2 addition could be a patio. It's a good way to think about it.
So that's it for my budget. Next up would be Diane on page 56, Treasurer's Budget.
On page 56, you'll see the revenue that is attributed to the Treasurer's Office, mostly business permits, fees, restricted tickets, parking meter tickets. And we do have fixed charges that are charged out to other departments. And then you can also see the authorized positions in the Treasurer's Office. Myself, the city treasurer, a deputy treasurer, and I have two customer account clerk cashiers. The program statistics are shown below that, and it's basically the number of parcels that we collect taxes on, and the dollar, actually the percentages that we take in on the tax collections, and how much goes delinquent. Excuse me. There's also the restricted tickets collected and the parking meter tickets collected. Those are the number of tickets collected. On the expenditure side, my budget is pretty bare bones. It has been for, you know, several years. Most of the expenses are related to tax collection, getting the tax bills out the door, certifications, small claims filings, and collection of the parking tickets. Now, we do split the parking ticket revenue 50-50 with the police department. They write the tickets, we collect, so we're splitting it 50-50. I guess the biggest blip that you will see in the 2014-15 line item is in the MERS retirement, and that's because there will be one retirement in my department.
No, she. No, we're working on that. This is another one of those time-based functions. It was a kind of a heartbreaker for us, because we went out there and said, we need to save some money, and Diane said, great, I've got a perfect way to do that, I retire. And so, she's, we're not going to hold her to it, but she's set a date during the course of the next fiscal year where she's going to be leaving public service. And so, not through coercion, through a well-planned process, and...
25 years.
And so, we are reflecting that in the budget this year.
Right, right. So unless you have any questions, that's my budget.
I have a question about the restricted tickets. The 12-month was $45,000, the request is $55,000. And if you look at the program statistics, the restricted tickets are declining. Are we going to be raising the fines, or are you proposing raising?
Well, you know, some of that has to do with our parking program and getting the monthly statements out the door. We have had a little bit of an issue with our software company.
Oh, okay.
So I'm anticipating on, doing better on that, right? Right, as soon as we get that all in line.
Other questions, comments? Okay.
Thank you, Diane. Next up is, next page 58 is the Assessing Department. Since we don't have an assessor, I'll be presenting this, but that is one of our top goals, is to get an assessor in, because we already knew it was a valuable position, but you know it's even more valuable when you don't have one, and you start getting all the questions, and you're like, uh, let me get back to you on that. Page 58 is the Fact Sheet. They do bring in just a little bit of revenue in the way of fees and fines, nothing that drastic. We do have three authorized positions, city assessor, city appraiser, and assessing assistant. The city assessor is currently vacant, and we did budget as if Sue Bovan was still here. That's kind of giving us, so there could be some savings there, depending on, you know, what wage rate we bring the assessor in, and exactly when they start, so there could be a little bit of savings there. Then at the bottom, you see the program statistics that they track, which is mostly, you know, the property valuations, because that's what they deal with. Page 59 is the expense side. Really, the big change here, we put in $75,000 in professional contractual to defend the MGH DLP case. Now, that just depends on how it proceeds through the tax tribunal, and, you know, if we were to maybe reach a settlement before then, then that'd be savings there. But we did budget $75,000 for the defense of that. Other than that, we did reduce travel and training just a tad. Assessors are, they are certified by the state, so they are required to get certain levels of training. But before Sue left, I went over all of her stuff with her, and we felt like we could come in at least with this amount and still have everybody maintain their certifications that they have. And that's basically it for the Assessing Department.
Could I ask, if there's no question, Ron to come up to discuss city attorney for this year?
Sure. I'm going to start on page 65.
I, of course, don't have a budget, I have a retainer. It hasn't changed from last year, so I can't address some of the numbers that Gary put in here. I mean, when I say that, I mean, for example, health insurance and those kinds of expenses, those are for people who went before me. They don't, I don't receive any benefit, any fringe benefit of any kind, it's simply a retainer, a monthly retainer, and I do get the municipal law service, but I have no city staff, city office supplies, materials, equipment, anything like that. So anything that is shown on the budget would relate to some other, either other...
Retirees.
Exactly, exactly. I'm certainly hoping any...
... Right.
Under the expenditures, you'll see, we have Ron's fee listed out as the flat fee that he's just shared. We have legacy costs with some past attorneys who are still receiving benefits from the city. We have $100,000 for the tribunal defense for We Energies and for other costs, for other tribunal expenses. We have some fees in there still where we're keeping fully bearing around, associated with the closeout. And then we have our standard kind of miscellaneous fees associated, it's a court cost associated with some transactions we have every year. So but for the $100,000 that we're adding in, specifically for the tribunal, it would be a pretty flat budget from last year. And certainly in Ron's case, it would be exactly flat budget, because he's been very gracious in offering to give us the same rate as he's charged this year.
Well, I appreciate that. I was hoping for more, but given the times and the fact that there was this general across-the-board cut, you know, I'm willing to do this. I can't cut staff or supplies, because I don't have any. So I'm willing to stand pat this year. And Bill's exactly right. The only thing I would say is, I may have misheard Gary, but I thought he said they actually have budgeted 75 for that We Energies.
In the assessor budget.
In the assessor budget, and it's 100 here, so I'm not sure if that's...
Well, $75,000 is in the assessor budget for the hospital. A net of 75 is put in the attorney's budget for We Energies, even though the note says $100,000. Even though the note says a hundred thousand, we feel like the county and Marissa have agreed to contribute towards that, so we just netted it out at seventy-five thousand. So going back to the original presentation at the very beginning of tonight, we mentioned there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars included in the budget for the defense, and that's the two areas that were increased as a result.
And that's just expenses for defense this year. We may have...
Correct.
...like expenses next year before everything's all settled out.
Correct. Yes.
Any other, any questions on the attorney's budget, anyone? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next one, I'll go through pretty quickly. This one's pretty straightforward, there's no salaries or fringes or anything like that. This is our insurance policy, our liability insurance, we get it through MML. This is our calculated cost, again, it's done on an actuarial basis. We typically go out for the service providers and do a survey to make sure that we're still getting the best deal. We usually get rebates that credit towards lowering the actual cost of this. So at this point, this is what we believe our liability is going to be calculated out at. We might still get a larger-than-expected rebate based on the performance of the MML funds, but it's a tough year. Part of the spike you're seeing, we've had a few extra claims based on the freeze emergency. We've had a few extra police cars getting hit by, sideswiped by drivers and things like that.
That's crazy sand back there.
No. So we've had, it's, it's not been necessarily a typical year in terms of our experience, but it's not really that far out of what the range typically is that we're paying for insurance.
Questions, comments?
Let me pass it back to Gary.
Okay, next is Transfers Out. Fact sheets, page one-ten, page one-eleven is the numbers. Let me just run through these briefly. As I mentioned earlier, for Transfers Out, the General Fund is responsible for balancing out other funds. For this year, it's the major and local street funds and also Lakeview Arena. In the past, every now and then, there's also been some support for the MAR Arenas, M-A-R-I-N-A. We're proud to report that for this year, the Marinas are self-sufficient, so they aren't going to, at least projected, to be required to have any transfer from the General Fund. I want to give kudos to Carl, he really put pencil to the paper. And the Transfer Out, we're at least projecting now, is by far the lowest I've ever seen in the fourteen years I've been with the city. So even though we're still transferring money out, it's really close to half of what we had been doing in the past. So I just want to congratulate Carl in taking the ball and really doing a good job with it.
What's the Transfer Out to Reserve?
That is to get the budget to balance. As we talked about, yeah, as we talked about, we're trying to have some reserve, you know, the way we're attacking the budget, we're talking about the volatile revenue. This is, once we've plugged in the numbers, we had four-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand dollars to apply towards that. More money can be applied towards that, the statutory revenue sharing, which we didn't put into the budget at all. And then the three-hundred-and-forty thousand that I talked about earlier, which is going to flow through for health insurance, that kind of flows in there as well. So each year, we're required to do a balanced budget, and this just shows how we balanced it, and that's actually good news. It's not an actual transfer out, it's an actual, we're setting this aside to help offset some of the volatility in the revenues we were talking about earlier.
Kind of like a contingent reserve.
Correct. Yes.
We were, we described it, I think, in our transfer letter as part of a planned supplemental, planned future supplemental submission.
Any other questions or comments, anyone? Okay.
Next is Debt Service. Now, there are debt service funds in the budget, but usually I've found the best way to approach this is to go earlier in the budget, page eleven. This is my favorite page, because the print gets smaller and smaller every year. But this is...
The numbers don't get smaller.
Yeah. The numbers get bigger and the print gets smaller. But this is all the debt service that the city has, every fund. And this just kind of gives you a general overview of where, and it shows the entire debt service. So we go from two thousand and fifteen all the way out to twenty thirty-two for debt service payments currently. And as you can see, it's divided out between principal and interest. Citywide, for next fiscal year, we're looking at roughly four and a half million in principal payment and one-point-seven million in interest. So that's pretty much what we're looking at. Now, I've added this year, two additional pages, the very next page, page twelve. This shows the debt the General Fund is responsible for. Now, this isn't saying the General Fund makes all of these payments, because if, as you look at the capital improvement bonds, like the two thousand nine, eleven, twelve, thirteen, other funds are also contributing to those, but the General Fund is also partly responsible. So really, the, probably the best way to look at this is the General Fund, for each of the totals, you see, the General Fund is probably responsible for at least half of each one of those. Then the next page, thirteen, these are the non-General Fund-supported debt. It's mostly that debt that already has a specific source to pay for it, like the library improvement bond, there's a specific millage for that. The brownfield debt, that's the tax capture in the brownfields. And then we have the utility fund debt, and that's covered by the revenues in the utility funds. So really, pages twelve and thirteen are, if you combine those, that's what page eleven would look at, look like. But you can actually see the print better on twelve and thirteen, so that's kind of why we did it that way.
I think the breakout is good, too, because there, there is, you know, difference between the two sheets and so on.
Correct, yes.
Because you can always kind of separate that in your mind, and when you're, when you're looking at the other sheets, but I think it's nice to see it broken out.
Hey, I'm gonna, if there's a way, I'll do it. I'll find a way.
This is, this would I, Your Honor, if I, if I may, this is, although the overall obligations that the full faith and credit have been committed to for the city are on the first page there, about eighty-four million dollars, you can see, this includes brownfield, there's general fund and non-general fund. And I found, when I get this discussion a lot from people who come down and visit us at community office hours and have questions about the financial health of the city, if you're, if you're managing your personal finances, typically the guidance that you get from a lending officer at a bank is you don't want to really have more than two and a half or three times your annual income, as far as the type of house that you can afford, and depending on how much money you can put down. You can see from the city's standpoint, our annual income every year for the General Fund is about twenty million dollars, and our obligations against that, our debt obligations against that are about forty-eight million dollars, or maybe just a little bit more than two to one. And so what you see there would be a reflection of the, the very prudent fiscal policy we use to manage the faith and credit of the city.
I'd like to add, too, we did have one drop-off from last year, that was the Marina. And it just so happened that the building was destroyed in the freeze, so it was just perfect timing. I mean, it, it's like, wow, you couldn't have planned it, I mean...
Building didn't last any longer than the bonds.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And we also, in the previous year, we refunded two issues, the Founder's Landing and, I think it was the two thousand and three, it says refunding WS number one, that's Water Sewer, that's actually the water plant. We refunded that and Founder's Landing for a little bit of savings. And we constantly keep an eye on things that debt we can refund at lower interest rates. And over the past few years, probably actually over the past six years, we were very active, and just about every issue you see here that isn't relatively new, we have actually refunded for, in some cases, some fairly significant savings. But as you can see, the next debt that's scheduled to come off is in the water system. The next General Fund debt that's coming off is in two thousand and nineteen. And, you know, as that debt starts to come off, then hopefully that frees up more money that we can apply to other areas that are of critical need. We did have some water membrane, we already have some existing bonds, and we found out the membranes aren't going to last quite as long as we originally projected. It was originally a ten-year bond, and looks like we're going to get seven or eight years out of them. So we are, Kurt will be presenting to you a replacement for those membranes, and, yeah.
You've hit a sore spot for our CFO.
Yeah.
He recalls the debate when the, when the bonds were first issued.
I remember it like it was, like it was yesterday.
Are the bonds for the new membrane going to be seven or eight-year bonds then, or can we do...
Yes, okay. He hasn't figured out how Kurt's going to pay for the rest of it yet, come out of his personal budget.
But he will pay.
Might know who wants to take this year.
So that's it for the debt. We'll be adding in more, you know, we just approved, we'll be issuing bonds, actually two, one through the DWRF for the mountain tank project on the water side, and then for the current construction season, we'll be issuing bonds end of September. So there'll be some more debt we get to add in for that, so. So next up is Kurt.
At this point, sir, we've been at it for two hours, offer just that for consideration, if you'd like to take a brief interlude.
Take five, ten-minute break? Yep.
Thank you.
Well, it's due seven minutes, we'll be back at seven-twenty-five.
Okay. Next up is the Administrative Services area, and that's Susan Bohor's department. With she not being here, I'm kind of overseeing it, but we're going to have Dave Blue present the city clerk's part, and Dan Fredrickson will report on the technology part, and I will report on the human resources part. So Dave will start with page fifty-four.
Thanks, Gary. Commissioners, as Gary stated, page fifty-four, we have the clerk's departmental fact sheet shows a fairly small amount of revenue compared to all other revenues in the, in the organization, but we do generate some. The funded positions, it's the same as in the past, and then the program statistics are there. Moving to, unless there's questions, moving to expenditures, again, we're pretty much a static functioning body inside the organization. There are some things that we did try to cut out of our budget. We, and the note down below on the bottom, eight oh one, includes a ten-thousand-dollar match for the NMU grant application for Born Digital Records. That doesn't, that is not included, my mistake, I didn't amend that note, so ten-thousand dollars has been removed from the budget just for that line item. We've tried to reduce costs related to publishing and printing as much as we could. However, we are required to do a certain amount of that statutorily. And on a state front on that issue, there, the note, as I've indicated, says, they, they're looking at relieving us of some of those mandatory publications at the state legislature level. I'm not sure if that's going to go anywhere or not, but they are looking at it. Could be a significant savings across the board to the city if that does happen. We are doing R2D2 in our division now, that's where we do our records management, the portion of it where we get rid of a lot of our records, that's... R2D2? Yeah, okay. It's, it's what we use as an acronym, I'm not even sure I recall it.
Record retention, document destruction.
Okay. That, yeah, I'm used to the old R2D2. And I would have explained it that way, however, we do that once a year in January. We haul all of the records we're allowed to destroy at that point each year to the county landfill, and they, they actually provide that service for free, other than we do get charged a small amount for certification that's required to meet state requirements for records we no longer have to retain and can destroy. But there is some equipment and equipment rental rate charges and staffing charges that go back to, they get charged back to our department for the transfer of the materials. It usually involves a couple of pieces of DPW equipment or Parks and Rec equipment, and we do get charged back for that. In the areas where we had an opportunity to cut, we also cut in as far as conferences and things of that nature that will impact our ability to train somewhat. We'll do all the things we can, you know, with modern technology to keep our training up, but it'll be a little more difficult. Some of the, some of the training that we are able to attend are very advantageous to us and very beneficial to the organization as well. Other than that, I really don't have a whole lot of comments unless there's questions on that. I'll move on to the Elections Budget. That would be on pages... What, professional contractual?
That includes code supplement.
Yeah.
Do's fees and...
Right, yeah, yeah, yep. Yeah, we did, we do have to keep the code up, and we do that annually.
I just wanted to point out, too, on the, Dave mentioned the ten-thousand-dollar grant match. The note is correct, at the end we put deferred. Again, that, that ties into our tranche concept, that, you know, if, as the volatile revenue firms up, hopefully in our favor, then that's one of the items we will look at adding back in.
In speaking with Marcus Robbins at Northern Michigan University, I carry that a little further. He's pretty positive about that, that the scope of that particular grant has changed somewhat, but he's very optimistic about the opportunities to have a better outcome this year on the application than he had last year. Excuse me. Moving on to Elections, that'd be page sixty and sixty-one. Again, we have the departmental fact sheet outlining the, the, well, I should say, the lack of revenue that we produced there. There's one that is stated back in two thousand and eleven, twelve, for a fairly sizable amount, that was for reimbursed election that was held that we weren't responsible for at all, we didn't have any dog in that fight, so we were able to bill back the entire amount for that election, which was, shows you how much it costs to run one election at the bare-bones level. It was very small elections, or there were some costs that we would, you know, maybe have in a bigger election that weren't reflected in that one. Authorized positions, we vary quite greatly as far as the number of election workers we carry, depending, you know, whether it's a presidential election or just an odd-year election where there's very little, there's on, on the docket for who's... very little, there's on the docket for who's to be elected or issues to be determined. Then there's the other program statistics there. If there's no questions, I'll move on to expenditures. We're pretty much a, you know, functioning, there isn't a whole lot you can cut from elections. It's a, it is what it is kind of thing. You know, we have a certain amount of costs, and we have to cover those costs as mandated. And one of the things that we are looking forward to is we may have some updated equipment coming our way via the federal government. They do have some funds left over from their big funding mechanism that they started some, maybe 10 or 11 years ago, where we did get a lot of equipment that was already supported to the local units at no cost. We do pay for our own maintenance and things of that nature on that, those pieces of equipment when we do experience problems, however, the cost to the buy-in is zero to us, so that's pretty good. Let's see, I'm trying to, let's see. We do publishing and printing here. I mean, we also have mandated requirements there for, you know, specific election notices. Different this year for us. Last year, we wound up having to pay for a rental fee where we had a mutual aid agreement with the Armory, and they have decided not to go do that any further. And that wasn't at a local level, that was at the state level, because they wanted everything to be more uniform. So we are paying them $300 per election now, so we had to add that back into our charges. Yeah, they do use our parks and things for different events that they do for their folks, and we will be sure to charge them for it, and they'll probably pay more than we pay them, so. One of the things you'll see in the previous election cycles, you know, the costs will go way up or down depending on the type of year you're in, if it was an off-year and even year. But with the new budget cycle, we'll see a smoothing of that because we'll have, you won't see those two small ones and two big ones. You'll see a small and a big together, you know, because the August primary will be in one year, one fiscal year, and then November general will be in the other, so it'll balance out more. So that's one thing we'll see. Done? None of mine, some of my staff, yeah. Some of Chris's wages are in there somewhat, overtime and things of that nature that are related to election operations. No. It's more for the people that are running the elections at the polls, at the precincts. Yep. Correct. Next summers, yeah, yeah, yeah. And, you know, that's if we have one next summer. Next summer will be an odd year, but you have to plan for the expenses because you're probably going to have one, who knows? If the schools might have some kind of a proposition on it themselves, or we have enough candidates for either the BLP or the city commission to warrant a primary, which would be five and three, I think, next year for the two respectively.
I just want to point out too, this is an area where the minimum wage increase hits a particular budget because these are mostly part-time folks. Because of the minimum wage increase, that's why we're seeing an increase in the wages in that line item from the previous year.
Thank you. I forgot that. Other than that, I really don't have a whole lot more to report unless there's questions.
Well, last year, we were talking about what we pay the workers, and we were talking about increasing their wages anyway.
We get that, and then they got another bump, so. But it's still, you know, I don't view that really as bad because we do get a fair amount of turnover, and I think the more folks are paid, the more likely are to come back. And one of the things that we will do to try to cut costs, like for next summer, would be, I try to use that as a training ground to go into a bigger election, to use more people than we actually need because of that turnover. So, you know, we would probably make a little harder cut on that and conserve a few dollars and use fewer people in that summer election.
Any other questions on elections or comments? Do you agree with that, Dave? Okay, thank you.
Okay, next up is human resources, page 67. And this is Susan's specific department within it. There is Susan herself, the Director of Administrative Services, the payroll clerk, Phyllis Johnson, Human Resources Assistant, Tina Trigumbo. And in the past, we had been budgeting for a part-time fellowship student that we would cost-share with Northern Michigan University, and we're recommending to not continue that program. We still hope to be able to get that position, but hopefully we can convince Northern to pay the cost of that. So we're going to see how that works out, so. Fixed charges, that's how we charge out administrative costs to particularly the utility departments and the street funds. That's just a mechanism we use to allocate overhead to those specific departments. And in this instance, we're just saying that $149,000 is Susan's entire budget is being charged out to other areas.
Let me point out too, Gary's referred to that as the mechanism we use. That's the charter mandated mechanism we use. We have to show the interdepartmental transfers for all the costs and how they apply. And so those funds require some amount of administrative support from HR, whether it's for billing or for managing the staff associated with those projects. And so he, Gary and Susan, sit down every year and determine what those fixed charges are and then allocate those out for the general level of support all the departments get in the city.
Page 68 starts the actual expenses. Because Susan's not here, I'm recommending everything be zero at this point. She's really going to kill me when she gets back. Now, it's, again, hers is more of a status quo type of budget. The one thing she is recommending doing, last year, we put in a performance pay, $25,000 that could be used at the city manager's discretion for employees throughout the city. That's just where we concentrated that area, and we're recommending that that be zeroed out, at least for the initial tranche, and then maybe as additional tranches come through, then maybe we can add that back in. But initially, we're recommending that comes out. Everything else is really pretty much status quo. She did the usual, you know, tried a nickel and dime, you know, like transportation and training and that kind of thing, and it's reflected in the budget here. But that was probably the biggest change that was recommended at this time.
Okay, shall we?
Okay, thank you. Next up will be Dan Frederickson. He'll start with the PEG, page 131.
Good evening, the air commissioners. I'm Dan Frederickson from the IT department. The, as you probably know, the PEG fund is used for a specific purpose, and that is to support quality video programming here for the city of Marquette, specifically for channel now, 191, which used to be channel 21. PEG is pretty straightforward, but on page 131, just let me mention that the broadcast mix, we're hoping for the upcoming fiscal year is going to change slightly, where I'm hoping we can do more in the way of bringing on additional programming, especially with city activities, meetings with commissioners and so on. And Kyle's going to be taking the lead on that this fiscal year, so I'm looking forward to having some additional variety on channel 191 that we haven't had in the past. And I think it's going to be very informative to the public to do that. Other than that, the fact sheet is very straightforward. There's no specific staff or salaries allocated to the PEG fund. It's supported entirely by staff in the IT department. So on page 132, where we look at the expenditures, what you'll see for the requested budget for fiscal year 15 is the continued payment of the lease for the video system that we installed here in the commission chambers several months ago. So that's where the lease or the support for this system is coming from, is from the PEG fund. The other item that we have under repair and maintenance has to do with an informational news subscription that we use for filler that basically broadcasts information, weather, sports information, things of that sort, in-between slides, Marquette business, things of that sort. We've used it for several years, and once we get programming up to the point where we don't need it anymore, we'll cancel it. That's about it for the PEG budget for the upcoming year. Does anyone have any questions?
Do you want to talk a little bit about?
One of the things that we'll be doing in conjunction with PEG and with the regular IT 628 fund budget is we'll be expanding the capability of this video system to where we can actually record, broadcast and stream live from other city locations other than just in this building. That is going to be paid in part from PEG, as far as PEG can afford it, and then the balance is going to be picked up from the IT budget as well. So that's one of the projects that we have on the table for this upcoming year. Thanks for reminding me.
There's a reference here to taking some funds out of reserves. What kind of reserve is that? What kind of reserve do we have?
I defer to you.
I was just thinking, I hope somebody doesn't ask that question. I don't have the number in my.
Try to stay on top of those things tonight, Gary.
Yeah, I don't have the number in my head, but each year, as you can see on the revenue side, that we budget for cable TV franchise, it usually comes in, you know, right at $12,000. And as you look at the previous history on the expenses, we haven't, in some years, we haven't come close to the $12,000. So that goes into the reserve fund, and the reserves are there for the current year budget and also for the 2015 budget to use those reserves. I apologize, I don't know the exact dollar amount that's in reserve at this time, but there is enough to cover it presently.
One of the reasons I ask is, I wonder if it'd be worth doing some additional promotion on the channel number change. I know we do it on the website. I don't know, maybe a couple of ads in the newspaper or something might not be a bad idea to make sure people know where to find it. Some people don't want to read through that list of 800 channels or whatever it is.
It seems like charter should be, should be publicizing that.
I think they're publicizing themselves. I'm just, you know, I'm saying if we have a fund that we haven't spent all the money and all we can spend it on is, you know, if that's a legitimate expenditure, it's just something to consider. I'm not directing you to do it by any means.
In follow-up to your first question, Commissioner, a couple of years ago, when we were looking at funding a replacement video system for the chambers, Gary gave us a number at that time of what was in reserves, and we did a cost analysis for the next five or six years to make sure we could continue to pay the lease payments plus pay for these monitors out of the PEG fund. And at that time, I believe the reserve was somewhere around $29,000, but I don't have a current number for you.
You know, I didn't need a hard number. I just wondered if, you know, if it was adequate to see us through a few years.
Right now, it is. And I revisited those numbers just a few weeks ago to see if we could support part of the remote broadcasting capability, and the answer's yes.
When you mentioned streaming from off-site locations, you mean streaming on 191 or streaming over the internet?
I'm talking about streaming over the internet. That's one additional capability we really haven't completed yet as part of this implementation of the video system. And that's one besides the remote broadcasting that we're going to tackle here very soon.
Good. Would that still be eligible for PEG funding then?
It depends, and the reason I say that is, we may choose, I don't know, I guess that would be a question above my pay grade, but I'm thinking that we may choose to stream certain videos or live presentations from elsewhere other than channel 191, which is entirely capable, we're capable of doing. And in that case, I don't know what the, what the direction would be in that case.
Equipment might be eligible, but maybe the.
The content.
The stream might not be.
That's right.
Well, I think what Dan's really saying is, we might choose not to stream on channel 191. And so we wouldn't, if we're not using channel 191, if we're just streaming it out to the world through the internet, it probably wouldn't be eligible for PEG expenses. But at this point, really what you've heard is Dan's doing a great job trying to get our use of that particular communications mode improved. We don't want to just rerun news that's available from other sources or weather reports or sports reports or things like that. We want to make it a much more vibrant set of local programming. We want to make it more accessible to a lot of the artists that are producing some of the really high-quality content that you've seen, whether it's on Northern Lights or biking, the kind of sports that people are doing now. And even just looking at some of the things Jack Deos let us use with some of the older photographs that were taken around the city, just to remind people how far Marquette's come. And so as we develop more of a portfolio of those connections, make that available, we'll certainly be running that on channel 191. But you might have events that are going on in the city that we want to broadcast to the world. And so if you don't have access to channel 191 in some of the places where you're at, that won't stop us from getting that message out.
Good. Any other comments or questions on the PEG fund?
Okay. Then we'll move on to the Technology Services Fund, page 195. On page 195, you can see that we are funded for three positions. I'm sure you know my staff very well. All of you have been into our department several times on occasion. Excellent staff, and they're doing a great job of keeping the city technology literate, or we're at least trying. What you can see under program statistics is what we've been reporting for the last three years for our online auctions. This year, we took a hit with the auction simply because we were moving from one auction site, which is a hosted site, to another. And the reason for that was, the previous site was charging a commission for every sale. And so for every asset that we sold on the site, we were charged 7.5%. We found another site that's free of charge, and that commission is charged to the successful bidder. It's been up for about six weeks now, and we've had several assets go through, and we're pretty pleased with the results. So for the next several months and into fiscal year 15, we're going to be using that site more, and you'll see the auction assets sales increase, I would say dramatically. If you've ever looked at our storage closet, you'll understand. We have a lot of old technology that we need to get rid of. Helpdesk calls, while they're continuing to increase, you'll see a significant increase in the future simply because during the past year, we. a significant increase in the future, simply because during the past year, we implemented a Helpdesk tracking system, and we rolled that out a couple of months ago. And what that gives us is the ability to track a lot more closely the calls and the issues that come into the IT department by staff in the forms of real problems, or enhancement requests, or just questions. And this will give us the ability to really keep the lid on top of those requests, and not lose them through the cracks like I am typically prone to do. I am probably the biggest culprit. So with an application like this, we can actually track what is assigned, and we can track length of time open and so on. So you'll see those requests as we start using that more fully go up in the future. With the website statistics that you see there, I added a footnote, simply because the number of hits has gone up dramatically from last year to this year, and that's primarily because we have so many entries to our website now, that is in excess of 800 pages, that not only hit the homepage, but go directly to, say, a departmental page. So the homepage hit count is no longer relevant so much as the overall hit count. And with 800 pages and climbing every day, one of the projects that we need to work on this coming year is to revamp our website, implement content management, make it easier for staff in the city to use and to update their webpages, so that the IT department, specifically Torrey, isn't taxed with keeping those up to date all the time. So we're looking for more timely completion, getting information out there a lot quicker, and getting buy-in from all the staff to do that for their own departments. It's going to be a real improvement for our website. Are there any questions on the fact sheet before we move on to expenditures on page 196? The technology budget for Fund 628 is roughly $31,000 higher than last year, and it has to do primarily with increases in professional contractual. And that's a result of an increase in our network support fees that we're budgeting for the upcoming year, some additional costs for streaming video that we just touched on a few minutes ago, as well as protecting our data a little better with additional off-site data backups. Under the 850 account called Communications, it's probably one of our brighter spots, because for fiscal year 15, the amount of the budget, as you see, is dropping by more than $23,000 from the previous year. And that's a result of implementing a new IP-based phone system, using different inbound/outbound connectivity, and changing the way that we use traditional phone lines, and moving to other providers to do that. And that's dropped the cost dramatically for that. Another significant change for our budget is with 940, our rentals. We are, as you know, we're leasing more and more of our technology, and as we lease more, those items go into our 940 account. Well, for this coming year, we're going to be leasing our network switches that we just recently purchased. They'll be out for lease for the next several years. We have a new server that's used for GIS and other engineering applications that's been added this year, and our TRP, our Technology Refresh Program, which is going to include the balance of the remote recording and broadcasting that we talked about a little bit earlier, as well as upgrading our video server to high-definition. Those are just part of the standard or scheduled technology refresh updates that we want to do for fiscal year 15. But that's another significant increase of $20,000 for that line item account that we didn't have last year. And it's a result of the additional leases. As we get rid of the older equipment, the older software that the city used to own, and we upgrade to new technology, we take on new leases on that. And so we're getting to the point where we have addressed most of our needs, and by fiscal year 15, most of those needs will have been met, and we should expect a stabilization of what the budget and what those leases will consist of going forward. And we'll have current technology that we'll be using, not only on the hardware side, but also on the software side. Another increase has to do with our 942 account called Software Licenses. The most significant increase in that line item has to do with upgrading our Office, Microsoft Office, software from what we're using now, called 2003, to 2014. It's a dramatic jump, a leap for us, and it's an absolutely requirement, because several of our leases that we just talked about are due this coming fiscal year. Desktops, replacement, for example, are coming up for lease renewal this year. 2003 will no longer work on those computers. So we are forced to upgrade the software for those new leases, for the new hardware that we are getting this fiscal year. Finally, I requested during the last capital budget cycle, $11,400 for completing our cable tray infrastructure here in City Hall, to clean up our cabling in the building. That $11,400 is in this budget, and it is an increase. And we do intend to finish that project this year, if this budget is approved. Those are the significant changes to the budget from last year. Are there any questions?
Well, I do see that even with all those changes, you've reduced the overall budget by about $35,000 or so.
Well, compared to last year, Commissioner, I think it's actually gone up $31,000, but even with the additional increases that we've been making in several line items, we also have line items where the budget amounts have decreased. So the overall net effect is an increase of about $31,000.
Expenditure side shows something different.
Am I on the wrong page?
I think, sir, you're comparing the 15-month to the 12-month.
No, I'm looking at 12 months and-
The 12-month we have is 576 for 1314.
It went up $35,000. That's-
Yes.
Right. That's what I meant to say.
Yes, it did.
If I may, Your Honor, I'd like to commend Dan. When I first came on board, that was quite a different story in terms of how we were managing our IT. We continue to see not just cost reductions and smart investments, but the amount of capability that we're getting for this, for this investment is profoundly different than what we had four or five years ago. You can see it immediately with the kind of technology we have here in the room. But pictures speak a thousand words. And more and more and more people are expecting to have multimedia types of communications, as opposed to just the standard hard copy newspaper for the way they want to share information. The cycles we're dealing with are far faster than what we used to have. We're providing information literally within moments of the need to make it available to the public, whether it's through Nixle, or Facebook, or through other types of online communications. And so I really take my hats off to the IT department. If I had to pick any single organizational unit that's had to move harder and faster to meet the expectations of the community, it would be IT. And I think they're really distinguishing themselves in the kind of value they're providing. So my hat's off to Dan for keeping us focused on that, and all the good things we're able to do with that investment. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Next up is Police Chief Mike Angeli to present the police drug forfeiture and criminal justice training, and we'll start on page 74.
Forgot how long it was going to take me to get on here. Bill, I just wanted to make a comment that kind of is supportive of what Bill said. As a customer or user of IT, I have to agree that the service provided to us is tremendously better than what it used to be. And as a simple-minded receiver of that service, I know it doesn't take much to please me, but, but just the fact that, you know, they can fix a problem, or they attempt to fix a problem, and it really has improved tremendously. And I agree that Dan is a big part of that. And I think a big first step for that department was realizing who their customers were, and it's us, and it was a big difference, so. And I also wanted to comment to Commissioner Coyne, thank you for bringing up the tranche, or trosch, or whatever it is, because I got excited when I first heard it. I thought it was some kind of a new doughnut, so I had to ask the same way everybody else did. It's French, right?
That you guys are excited too, and it's doughnuts.
Yeah, that's what I meant, you know. Sounded like some kind of a glaze thing to me. And I learned one other thing, too, that I don't want Gary to present my budget, ever, in the future. So there's a value in coming to these and watching how you work. With that said, do you want to start on the-
Page 74, fact sheet, if there's any, yeah, revenues.
My fact sheet, okay. We'll start with revenues. You see the typical line items in front of you on page 74 that I have for revenues, along with everybody else, was asked to make some considerations or some changes in this regard. I tried to help with the budget issues, and I was able to select a few of these line items and offer increases in the amount of about $31,000 anticipated. Mainly, they were in fees, such as our LiveScan fee, which is our fingerprint program for steel weapons permits, job applications, and things of that nature, which is a very significant source of revenue for us, surprisingly. I mean, there's, every day, there's a group of people that use that system. I raised that amount by about 12%, a $70 to an $80 fee, and especially the CPL people, they'll pay just about anything to get their license, so. You know, things of that nature. Then we had other fees related to that system, other kinds of fingerprints that I was able to raise, ink fingerprints, I was able to raise some accident report fees. And the state of Michigan kind of, I don't want to say pulled a fast one, but they forced us to use a computerized system that now basically allows the customer to go to the state to get their reports, so they can get ahead of us on the revenue. But we still have a significant number of people that come locally for copies of accident reports from us, so we were able to change some of that. It's insignificant, kind of funny, but I raised our animal trap fees by $10. And to give you some perspective, I expect to make about $150 more on that next year. So those go in spurts. You know, one year we'll trap 100-some animals, and another year we'll trap, you know, two or three. The biggie for me is the manager was generous enough to allow me to take credit for the revenue being brought in by the upset move to City Hall, which is in its almost complete stages now. The agencies are starting to move in as we speak. We're trying to accommodate all of their needs as they make the transition. As a side note, one of the, and I didn't have a chance to mention this to Bill yet, because I just learned about it today, but with the ATF coming into the system, or coming into the building, they're going to provide us, the Market Police Department, with a video recording system, which is becoming a requirement now when you interrogate felony suspects. So at no cost to the city, they're going to install it, maintain it, and allow us to use it. I don't know the financial benefit of that, but it's significant, and it's purely on the part of the ATF, because they need it for their work, and they're willing to share it with us. Now I got to come up with a policy on how to use it, so. The revenues other than that are fairly consistent with other years. You know, restricted tickets, 656 is our winter parking ban, and that fluctuates kind of regularly every year, depending on what kind of winter we have, when it starts, when it ends. Last year, we had to extend it by a month because of the snow conditions in the first day of April, to keep people from parking on the street. So that's something that changes periodically. Other than that, I can point out also that the school system continues to give us an amount of money in $9,000 to help us support our youth services officer. The Kaufman Foundation, our endowment fund, continues to support us in that regard as well. Are there any questions on the revenue side things?
Just one question of the youth services officer and the revenue coming in. How much does that cover? Is it, it's a full-time position?
Well, it's not a full-time. It costs me about $80,000 a year to employ an officer for 12 months, and I bring it down to somewhere in around $50,000 would be the cost for that officer to be in the school, five days a week for the, whatever weeks it is for the length of the school year, the nine months. Between Kaufman and the school, it covers about half of what it would cost me to do that, and we absorb the rest. Keeping in mind that I use that officer if I desperately need to for a road patrol. If I have some shortages there, I can, I can try to make that adjustment. I try to use most of this money to pay overtime to other officers to work the roads, so that officer can spend 100% of his time at the school. That's the goal I'm trying to achieve. It doesn't always work out perfectly, but it's close.
Yeah, it's, working in the public schools, it's certainly nice to see, you know, an officer every day working with the kids. It's been great, and I think it's cut down on a lot of our problems, certainly.
Well, I agree with you, but it's also a benefit to us, because we developed that relationship with the school, where we, we gain from it as well as an enforcement agency, and we have more eyes and ears, in a sense, working for us out there.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to page 75, right? Wherever you want to go. Okay.
76.
Well, okay. See, you got these in the wrong order. Well, I do, but they asked me to skip over, and I'll go back to it. I'll go back to 75 in a minute, but going to 76, my expenditures. Again, I was asked to trim as much of that off as I could, and through the basic reduction of about 10% from everything, or as much as I could, I was able to trim off about $62,000 from the expenditure side. A lot of it is based on trends of previous budgets. For example, I had budgeted considerably for the increase last year for the cost of impounding animals at the UPOS because of their increased rate. However, it didn't pan out to be as expensive as I thought it was going to be this year. And I'm hoping that there's some consistency to that, but that's one of the items that you never know how things are going to change. And right now, it's dependent solely on the number of animals that we lodge. I could be more specific, but, you know, that's generally how it is, or where it's at with the expenditures. Nothing that really stands out in that regard. Sure.
Um, I, I am amazed at how much your budget is, four point three million.
So am I.
Um, do you have any idea how much the budget for law enforcement is in Market Township and in Chalkley Township respectively?
I do not, but I would think it's considerably less.
Yeah. For, could you find out?
Sure.
Uh, I, I think that's a valid concern, uh, in terms of, uh, four point three million is a lot of money.
I, I would, in that regard, I would also take the opportunity to point out that earlier in the presentation, uh, Gary indicated that our public safety budget was about thirty-eight percent, correct?
Right.
Of police and fire and, and that's even well below what it is nationally for cities of our size, most, most communities our size, it's, and Tom can help me out with this because he did the research, um, is between forty-five and almost fifty percent of city budgets on public safety alone, so.
I, I'm going to ask the same question of Tom and he probably could look it up too, uh, to see what they respectively.
Uh, firemen cost a lot more than policemen.
Well, I, I don't want to, oh, I'm not going there. Okay. Thank you.
They just have a lot more maintenance, that's all, you know? You see, I gave him the benefit of going last. He can, he can take a shot at me.
Just a quick question.
Yes, Commissioner.
Basically, your, what you're proposing is, is not going to affect putting officers on the street and?
Correct. Yeah, I, I, um, when we first discussed the, uh, the need to make reductions, again, uh, the manager made it clear that he wanted, didn't want to affect personnel or services if he could help it and, um, we were able to keep, uh, what I have. What I have done in that regard is we had a retirement earlier this year of our cybercrime detective that was assigned to the FBI as a, uh, as a, uh, person there. Um, I'm delaying that for, uh, six months, uh, into the two thousand fifteen, uh, fiscal year, which would save, uh, us about forty-eight thousand dollars. So that's one of the ways I was able to, uh, help out with our budget.
Let me offer too, on, on that point, um, it, it's not a sacrifice of capability. Our experience has been that it takes about that long to actually get all the clearances for somebody who's been selected to be able to work. Uh, so they're basically, they're selected to go to work and they're on the bench waiting for the clearances. Uh, so it's a serendipitous six months. Uh, we don't have to start paying for the full cyber detective rate, uh, until they can actually do cyber detective work. So, uh, but this is the kind of, uh, paying attention to the, to the glazed doughnut discussion earlier. If, if you have some sense of when you're going to incur those costs, uh, it gives you an opportunity not to have to put those into the baseline budget upfront, but program them for later in the year.
Well, I, I think this is money well spent for, for public safety and I think that's why it was established as one of our highest priorities during the strategic planning session. I also want to agree with Sarah. I don't work in the school, but I spend time there, taking children there and I, I really feel so strongly about supporting that program. I don't like to say too much because sometimes we invite tragedies, you know, but I think just quietly going about our business and, and having officers there is really important and I think it means a lot. I really do.
Let me offer too, Mike had mentioned it as kind of the city manager being gracious. We get a tremendous return on value for the different kind of very out-of-the-box initiatives that our chief has pursued. Uh, you see it with the additional services we can provide with our, our drug dogs and the bomb dog now that we've picked up. Uh, we very frequently now are getting asked and getting reimbursed for the additional services we're providing throughout the upper peninsula for smaller departments that don't have that. We're getting the, the, of course, the cybercrime detective, uh, it's literally the only one in a tri-state region, uh, so we have far greater awareness and are able to support all of the different kind of online scams and crimes that are going on. Uh, we have, in addition to that, a response unlike any other in the area. We've had some recent, kind of very unusual crimes, uh, where literally between the time Mike tells me that the crime has been committed and the time that the suspects are sitting in handcuffs in the office, uh, is shorter than the amount of time it takes actually to drive into work. Uh, so the kind of services that our team provides down there, the kind of outreach that they're trying to build through participation in things like Upset, all of those intangible values that we're getting from the, from the tools and skills that those new partners bring, provide tremendous value above and beyond just the monetary way that we're measuring it here tonight. And so I really commend them for that. It's not a matter of grace, it's a matter of good entrepreneurial thinking on the part of our chief, inter-local cooperation, outreach and constantly looking at finding ways to provide the best value to the residents. So really to be commended.
Well, thank you. I graciously thank you. I don't deserve all the credit. I mean, you're, you're with me too and so is Gary once in a while, you know? But, um, yes, we, uh, you know, we try to, to work, uh, we try to make the public our biggest supporters in everything that we do and the, the school system is certainly important to us. Um, continuing on with, unless there's any comments, continuing on with just some other points of interest, uh, we still, uh, maintain one full-time officer on the Upset, uh, team who is now going to be in the same building with me so I can keep an eye on him for a change. Um, I mentioned the cyber detective, uh, one, uh, small change we had to make this year, uh, we had to add an additional crossing guard. We are responsible for training and budgeting crossing guard. It's not a significant, it's budget, it's about sixteen thousand dollars a year, but the law requires that we do that. Because of the addition of the new elementary school at Gray Beret, we had to add one more guard to begin actually in September, but it'll, I can cover it with this year's budget that one month, but October first will be, uh, when it starts officially in the budget. Um, couple of other points, if you don't mind, you mentioned, Bill mentioned the bomb dog. I, I, uh, hope to be able to introduce that dog to the commission soon and, you know, I know people like to comment about, you know, there's not many bombs and we don't have many bombs, but the value I see in the animal is that, um, that we can check places and we can offer the service for larger events, for venues that want to be searched prior to events and things of that nature to give the users some level of comfort or to relieve anxiety. An example might be a high school graduation at the Lakeview Arena or something like that where there could be a potential for a problem. And I don't, I place value in the animal for actually coming to the scene of a suspected bomb, but also to be a preventative measure if, if, uh, we have a, a venue, any one of our festivals might be another example. And, and the only reason I haven't brought the dog forward yet is because he, uh, we got him, uh, on a deal from Oakland County and the dog was not completely trained, which is why it was kind of a deal. And so our, uh, our master handler, Marty Mongers, completing that training with the animal and it should be shortly within the next month, I'm thinking, but he's a black lab, his name is Nitro. Yeah, and they're, they are amazing animals and, uh, they amaze me every day with, with their skills and if you don't mind me bragging for just another minute, um, I'm good anyway. Unless you want to hear about it on Monday night with the, with the, uh, rowing club stuff, but I'll tell you, I mean, our, our dogs are, are so good that, uh, the, the customs and border patrol asked them to come to the, uh, border crossing last month up at the Sioux and they spent a whole day, a day and a half up there just searching cars. They searched like five hundred cars, um, or, you know, sniffed five hundred cars coming through and, and that was quite a, uh, from our perspective, quite an honor to be asked to do that. And then afterwards, the agents were so impressed with the ability of the dogs because they actually hit on five vehicles that, that proved to have some, you know, contraband in them, which is by my understanding, not usually what happens with the dogs that they usually use. So, um, you know, our animals are, are, they're, uh, and it's not attributed to me, it's attributed to their handlers are being come more well-known and more successful in everything they do. And, uh, just as another side note, I think it's kind of humorous that, um, that Caspian Police Department, uh, you know where Caspian is, there's, there was two officers there and, uh, they wanted to cut one. So, uh, the chief got ahold of me to see if I could help him get a dog to account, to account for that lost officer. And so, and the chief was the one officer that's left. And so Marty went down there, spent a day or an afternoon or an evening in front of the board commission there and convinced them to purchase a dog for this chief and, and now, uh, uh, that's in progress. So he's out there with a olive branch and he's become well-known as a, and he's obviously very good at convincing people that the dogs are, are good for the community. So Caspian will now have a K-9 unit. So, so be careful when you're driving through.
The K-9 unit will be as large as their regular unit.
Yeah, pretty much. I mean, they impress me every day with, with what he accomplishes. And one last comment I'm just going to make and that's, uh, has something to do with IT as well. We are, uh, transitioning to a new, um, records management system in the police department. It's something that Gordy Warchuk worked on before his retirement and came to fruition about the same time that he was retiring. And we recognize the need to share information on a broader scale, uh, and to receive information on that same scale and we were limited in the UP, so we're moving to a, a state records management system, which, uh, Dan and IT has been very helpful in helping us transition to that. Um, first year is free, so we have a grace period to get it, get it settled in, but, uh, it'll be a small increase per off, the bill you pay per officer, so much per officer on your department. There'll be a slight increase when we go to it, but we'll have access to at least fifty other Michigan State Police Department's records. They will have access to ours as far as sharing information on criminals, on activities and those, those kind of things. I know some people, the thought that goes through their head might be the Big Brother or the sharing of information that might be a little bit too, uh, much or too available, but, but from our perspective, it, it serves us very well if we have someone in hand and we can type his name into our computer and learn that he was in trouble in, in Lansing or in Detroit. I mean, those are the communities that are going to this system and, uh, get an understanding for that person. And, uh, it'll be a new for us, it'll be a little, uh, quite a little bit of a learning curve, but still something, uh, I think that again, shows that, uh, we're always trying to do better. Um, is there anything else? Oh, yeah. That's all. Any questions on that stuff? Cause.
Commissioner Campana?
I might have missed this, but do you have an officer assigned to cybercrime?
Yes. Um, we, we just, that person just retired. We just went through the promotion procedure, uh, to select that person, but we're delaying that actual promotion until he's cleared, uh, for, uh, national clearance through the FBI before he can actually take that position. And that's the time period we're going to use to try to, uh, save some money in, in rehiring or backfilling his position. It's going to be, Chris Aldrich is going to be that officer.
Seems like that'd be, that's an important position.
Well, you know, it, it was learning, it was growing, it was something we weren't really familiar with, but now that we know what the good and the bad was of the last officer, we have a new guy going in that's young and aggressive and actually quite knowledgeable and he's, he'll learn from our past experiences and we'll broaden that and make it a lot better. Thanks. Oh, page one thirty-four.
One thirty-three.
One thirty.
Well, there's not much on the facts. We can go to one thirty-four.
Okay. What other pages was I supposed to hear?
Uh, the next is one thirty-nine. We're doing one thirty-four.
All right. One thirty-four will be the, uh, drug forfeiture fund. Yeah. It's the way accountants think. They don't go in order. Um, drug forfeitures is the, the mandated fund we have that is kind of arbitrary, I guess is the last, is the word I can think of. It's, it's there by, by law, but the, as far as the expenditures and our revenues are kind of up in the air every year depending on how many forfeitures we have, the amounts that the forfeitures are that we have. It was significantly impacted with the, uh, uh, creation of the medical marijuana laws or the change in the laws, which affected our forfeitures related to those offenses. Um, but I have budgeted or, uh, anticipated, uh, at, at least a, uh, influx or, uh, revenue of about six thousand dollars this year and an expenditure to match. And those expenditures are what I would spend money on if I have a, uh, non-budgeted police-related costs, such as, such as I occasionally have a, uh, in-car video system that breaks and I have to replace it or a radar unit that I have to replace that I don't, that might be a capital item that I don't really have the money in budget. So I use that for that purpose. Any questions on that? Okay. One thirty-nine is the criminal justice training fund. That's our state-funded training that we receive, uh, every year as a result of traffic citations. Uh, the state takes a portion of every traffic citation that's paid for, runs through a formula and, and gives money back to each community, uh, uh, to help with training. It can be spent only on training or training-related expenses. They give us seventy-five hundred dollars a year. It's been that way for as long as I can remember. Um, the only requirement we have is that we have to put a matching amount in our budget, uh, just to show that we also are willing or concerned about training and not solely dependent on the state funding. So I will occasionally get into our seventy-five hundred dollars I did this year, but there are years that I really don't have to spend that money, but it fluctuates from year to year. Nope. Want me to be, let me take over for you?
Thank you, Chief. Uh, next up is Chief Belt. He's going to present fire, rental code inspection and it's listed as swimming areas, but we've actually changed the name to waterfront safety, so.
Fancy.
But Chief Belt will start on page seventy-seven.
Thank you.
Uh, under revenue on page seventy-seven, uh, you'll see under FEMA grants, it's zeroed. We've actually put in for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars roughly in the form of three grants. So one of the ways we try to make up, because we're not a fountain of revenue in a lot of ways, is we, we do put in a lot for a lot of FEMA grants and we have been pretty successful. And those endeavors, our, our fire protection money for the state is conservatively estimated a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. So you got a hundred and fifty maybe last year, but, uh, Gary and I are pretty conservative there. Many grants primarily we use to, uh, fund our free smoke detector program and then the rest of the, uh, services rendered, fees, fines are pretty insignificant, but add up to about one fifty, eight, eight fifty and that including the three grants we put in for. On the expenditure side for the fire department, and I guess an anticipation of the question was asked before to, uh, Mike. Marquette Township's a paid-on-call department. National average on paid-on-call, they're about fifteen percent the cost of full-time fire protection. About fifteen percent the cost of full-time. It varies and that's operating only, it's not the cost of equipment, supplies, things like that, it's just the operating. Marquette has, I think, two point six full-time positions. think, 2.6 full-time positions. And then their chief gets a stipend, so we're in a quarter million, somewhere in that area probably on operating. Chocley, on the other hand, fully volunteers still. And their operating costs are, in national average again, for fully volunteer departments, is about 5%. And we did a, a study on the request of one of the commissioners about a year and a half ago about the public safety or health costs for the city of Marquette compared to some other cities. And Mount Pleasant, Traverse City, we went downstate to three or four places, all of the cities in the U.P. that have that full-time service, and we're the lowest. If I remember correctly, we're about 34%. And the highs are up in the 50s, 58, Traverse City, 57, and Mount Pleasant. So you're getting a little bit, I think, a pretty good bang for your buck. And it is a value added, I think, when you get into full-time fire protection. It's the immediacy, the quick response, the medical service, uh, the lower insurance number, which brings in business. I think that's, that's the value added, at least for the fire department. Um, under our expenditures, excuse me, uh, we have a position coming open in October due to retirement. We won't let fill that position. So under salaries and wages and benefits, we gain there. I've withdrawn a request for $45,000 for medical upgrade training for the firefighters. Might be able to skin that cat a different way. Um, we also dropped our request for two complete air pack units and, uh, five bottles to service those units. It's about $16,000 there. That's how we arrived at our 2.8, and that's about 14% of the general fund budget, the fire department.
Will some of that stuff possibly be restored if we, if we see additional revenue then?
Yeah. The way that we buy SCBA is we go nine years, we buy two per year, and we have a respite year. And we could probably get by a year, possibly two years, but when they break, they break, they're done. They're expensive.
May I offer, Your Honor, when Tom's saying we might figure out another way to skin the cat, we've identified some other revenues that, uh, very altruistic members of the community have said that they intend to, to donate because of their past experiences with the fire department. And as a consequence, we might be able to cover those expenses and be consistent with the intent of the donor, uh, for how to use that money. So we might, what you're, you're seeing here would be the general fund withdrawing it from the general fund, but then using other funding available to cover the same amount. So we wouldn't restore it, but we'll still be able to get the kind of training that potentially-
What about the firefighter position vacant? Would we, would that be restored if we had additional revenue, or, or you feel that you don't, you don't need that position, or?
Uh, we, yeah, our position we have.
Yeah, okay. So that would be a possible tranche item in the future?
Yeah. In the meantime, it's going to be overtime. Uh, Tom will be able to, to get the schedules to work, but that will be one of the highest priorities putting back in. He's just, he's displayed exceptional situational agility on this particular requirement.
Inside joke, I guess, sir. Some good news on the federal grants. We're at tertiary consideration for a $58,000 grant upgrade, or actually completely replace the vehicle exhaust removal systems of both stations. So that'd be about a $5,000 cost to the city. I think that creates values for the building too, when we start talking about selling or repurposing. Can I answer any questions on fire?
Just, I'm sorry, go ahead. Would, um, not that it's in the cards for right now, but would having a single fire station change the, uh, number of personnel you need?
Not, not the way I see it, no.
Okay.
Well, the workload is such, I think 10, 12, 15 years ago, I could probably answer yes. We could probably get by with three less, but the way that our, our workload is, uh, and the things that we do, the way that they've evolved, we were, we're right where we need to be.
And I just, I, I'd like to mention, I'm, you know, I'm impressed by the service our fire department provides. And I know in, in many cases, in medical emergencies, the fire truck is the first one there. And many people have commented on that, so.
Yeah, over 50% of the time, uh, is where we're at now. And, you know, the way that I look at it, and certainly a couple of years down the road, is why you had to render about the same care that the ambulance can render if we're first on the scene for several minutes or even longer. You know, half the time or better, so.
And, you know, to me, it's just a benefit of living in the city of Marquette that we have that kind of service available if it's needed. And often it is needed.
Let me offer to, uh, you know, I lauded, uh, police chief, our fire chief deserves equal praise for his extraordinary out-of-the-box thinking and the value that department continues to deliver. If you take a look at what he's been able to do to accommodate changes in the local economy and changes in the local demand, uh, you might recall there was no water safety program several years ago. Uh, the fire department has taken over full responsibility for running that program now. They're doing it in an extremely effective way. Uh, earlier this year, beginning really the last, at the end of the last fiscal year, beginning of this fiscal year, the only commercial ambulance service that was in town, uh, went out of business. And so the fire department provides almost six to 700 response calls per year, uh, picking up the slack. And they've done that, uh, through their own initiative to get the additional training and the additional gear to be able to respond, oftentimes, uh, in mere minutes after getting the call through central dispatch and getting out. Uh, they're looking at some extraordinary expansion requirements should some of the decisions that the, the, uh, hospital sector makes, the energy sector makes, to be able to make sure we're providing that equipment. And he's seeking every opportunity to do that in a collaborative way. So if you've ever come to any one of the, the fire, fire service days that we have in the fall, uh, you'll see a tremendous variety of equipment, uh, providing, uh, protective service for, for, uh, fire prevention. And all of the collaboration that requires means very carefully planning what your individual investments need to be to complement what else might be available in the area, so that no individual jurisdiction has to bear the full cost of every possible contingency in their community. And he's done that with extraordinary effectiveness. You've seen that in the increase in our ISO ratings, lowering our insurance costs and lowering those to all of our residents. So, uh, just as with our police department, to make sure I'm not having to live with any kind of, uh, ongoing, uh, jibes between the two of them, and they have a very great relationship. Uh, uh, Tom works equally as hard. He does as great a job in finding that value and making sure we're, we're providing that to the residents, uh, as Mike and any other, and every other department head that we've gotten. So my hat's off to him. Uh, he's taking advantage of some opportunities that are going to be critical restores for us as that, as the revenue situation stabilizes.
One of the things I don't want to see happen is, is you're in a position to talk into a future chief. And how long it'll take us, or when can we get better boots on the ground for the medical service? And the answer you get if we don't do anything will be two and a half years. So it'd be nice if a future chief could just say, "We're ready." You know, six months, we'll be up and rolling, a higher level, whatever happens to be, whatever commissions and the manager at the time come to. Sir?
No, you answered. I just was going to ask you that. Thank you.
Uh, page 81, rental code. And this is a, a section of the fire department or department within the department that pays, it pays its way pretty closely. Uh, we're probably never going to break even because we do a lot of courtesy inspections, uh, that account for their time. When somebody kind of pleads buying a rental, you know, rental changing hands in the city, we'll go out and work with them for free, just to kind of get them on board, get a relationship established and let them know what the rules are, and generally garner some cooperation. So I don't think you'll ever see it break even, but we get pretty close. That's a service that just, you know, Bill and I were talking about it, excuse Mr. Vida, and we talked about the rental code. I said, "I lay myself off before I let the rental code go." That's how valuable it's been, I think, in the city. And our rentals, especially our student rentals, we're at almost 75% of our fire experience was, we're in those units. We're below 40 now. That's a direct result of, of the code and the way that we enforce it, I think. And, you know, really try to cooperate with people, get them to cooperate with us, so. And I did, that is cut 10%. Um, to be honest with you, it's a rob Peter to pay Paul, um, as we'll pick up the slack out of the fire budget for some of the things that are needed there in rental code, but, uh, that is a 10% cut. And by the way, the fire was a 4.6% cut, as far as the original request.
I know there were objections from some landlords early on with this process.
And there still are. There still are, so.
I, I really think it's essential in Marquette that we do this. You know, there are so many rental units and I think there are many good landlords that maintain good properties, but I think it's really important that we be out there inspecting these and, you know, it's just, I think it's just critical for the-
Yeah, a high percentage do a good job in our cooperative.
Yep.
Okay, and then last is, uh, on page 102, and that's the waterfront safety. It's a, not a revenue producer. When we, we build our life-saving stations and, and do infrastructure work, we try to do that as Eagle Scout projects, so there's not a lot of, uh, costs associated with that. And we do have, uh, the hospital and the university have been very generous with buying materials and doing some end kind work with us, so. Not much revenue on waterfront safety. There is a 10% cut, and that's, uh, primarily in operational costs and, uh, two less lifeguards. Yeah, the wild card with the, uh, beachfront safety and the, and paying the lifeguards is, depends on the weather. We've had 17 beach closure days this year, so we've saved a lot of money. You know, we could have torrid weather next year and, you know, be out there hat in hand looking for a little bit more, so.
Another experience, and, you know, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong. Lifeguards are notoriously difficult to keep towards the end of the season when school's starting up. And so we typically start out the season with a lot more than what we end the season with. And Tom's been on occasion supplementing those with some off-duty officers and things like that, just as need be. But it's very weather-dependent and it's school schedule-dependent because these aren't retirees, these are younger spry kids who are willing to jump in the water under any condition and get out and do what they got to do.
Sure, point.
Tom, I have a question about, uh, the possibility of Clark's beach opening and the shortage of lifeguards. And you brought that up earlier. What's your plan now for that?
Couple of ways to go. If Clark opens up and, and you want to guard, I think we have to probably decommission the South Beach, probably go with one guard at, uh, Terrace Park, because we need four to five for another 1,200-foot beach. That's what we're going to get. And I also eliminated about $6,000 out of that request for building lifeguard stands at Clark, so.
I just respond, have you had any people burning crosses in front of your house when you say, "I'm going to close"? Uh, would you consider recommending closing South Beach?
Yeah, perhaps a phase out, um, and, uh, go to rescue stations there, or if we were fortunate enough to get over our 21, 22 lifeguards, then maybe a part-time, extremely hot day with a lot of families, a lot of kids there.
Is it your decision to do that, or the commission's decision to rec, to close, close South Beach?
I would make a recommendation. If, if Clark comes fully online, it's a 1,200-foot beach, it'd be another Ricciardi's Cove. So three stands, five lifeguards, and something's got to give somewhere. So it'd probably be tourist, it would be one position, and probably a decommission or just, uh, a selective guarding of South Beach. That's probably the way I would recommend it.
Okay. Thank you. I, I think we need to discuss that more. Okay, thanks.
I agree. Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, I, obviously we shouldn't pass without, without commenting on the fact that we actually have a waterfront safety program, and many communities don't. And, uh, Chief Belt has taken the lead in this, and, and, you know, we, we've received recognition throughout the state. And, uh, you know, I just think that's, uh, that's a real feather on our cap, and certainly you deserve a lot of thanks for the role you've played in this. So thank you.
And as far as lifeguards go, we have a feeder program where we reach out to the high schools and try to get kids in, and we certify them, put them for the training. And we're still kind of stuck at that 21 positions. Can't seem to get quite beyond 21. And if you think of lifeguards in, in, in the younger, uh, kids that we employ, it takes about two to fill one position. Between the summer vacations, back to school, a little bit of this, a little bit of that, you know, 16, 17-year-olds, it's a challenge.
Going to offer exactly that point. Uh, you know, there's a supply function as well, as a demand function that we're going to have to think of a different way to solve it, should we have to substantially increase the number of, uh, guarded beaches that we're going to have. And we're looking at that, you know, part of the, part of the capital expenses we're looking at is part of the proposal from Michelle Butler and how she builds the park. Uh, part of that is looking at different ways to partner with Northern in their outdoor rec programs and see if we can't find some way where they can share more of the direct service provision, uh, along with the city. So we'll, we'll find a way to solve that problem. We'll come back with a recommendation. But I also appreciate Commissioner Ryan's comments. Uh, Marquette's been recognized again for really having their premier water safety program in the region. That's not something we've been recognized for over 120 years, uh, since before the Coast Guard existed. And it was the, the realm of the old US Life Saving Service to provide that kind of, uh, waterfront safety. And it's been considered as a basis for state statute. It's been something that's been modeled by other, uh, lake shore communities throughout the region. And, uh, that support, that advocacy and that recognition i- is a very clear indicator that that was the right decision when the commission made that four years ago, and it continues to be the right decision today.
And just to add a comment to your lifeguard, um, I, I'm told it's not the glamorous job it appears to be to some. I, I had a son who did it many years ago, and he tells me he, he didn't like the job at all. So it, you know, it, it looks like it's fun just sitting in the sun, but it's, it's a very demanding job. And, and I can see why it would be difficult to recruit.
Yeah, it's extremely tedious.
Yep.
Anything else for me?
Uh, thank you, Chief Belt. Uh, that, actually, a second.
Commissioner-
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thanks. Um, just for everyone watching at home, one of the things that I think was great about, you know, looking at Chief Belt's budget, there are some statistics in here, and I really appreciate that. I think a lot of people think that, uh, the fire department sits idle until there's call of action. But, um, you know, you can go through here and look at everything that, that the firefighters do, and, and it's an awful lot. So I'd just like to thank you for that. And also thank you for being very diligent with your budget too. Um, and certainly I know, I was the commissioner who asked last year, what, what are, you know, what is our fire department like compared to others percentage-wise? Um, and when Tom came back with those figures, I think, you know, for those in the community that think we're too top-heavy in, in police and fire, um, you know, when you, we actually hear how we're doing compared to others. I mean, we are bare bones and we're doing a lot. So I think, um, it's great to put that out there. And I'd just like to thank your department and also Mike's for all they do. So thank you.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Uh, that concludes tonight's presentations. Uh, first night's usually the longest night. Uh, you just really don't know how to plan this stuff out. But, uh, for those of you that are new to this, uh, we usually don't spend this, this long on all the budgets, but first night is, like I said, the longest. But, uh, that concludes what we're doing. Thanks.
You start predicting and things are going to go awry. Anything else from, from anyone? More comments? I, I guess I'd just like to thank the city managers, CFO, and the department heads. I think it's, uh, it's a very good start. Uh, we've got three more sessions to go, and hopefully they won't be quite as long. But I, again, I, I don't want to predict because when I predict, things go awry, so. With that, we adjourn.